All good. All right, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty of us. Good evening, everyone. We have the privilege of sitting in on the September twenty third. Planning board, please move into the September, I'm trying to get this here. It's only September, sorry. Uh, September planning board meeting, thanks for coming out. Uh, we're gonna follow the agenda published, if you didn't get an agenda there outside on the table. It's, I'll introduce the groups. Uh, we have Kim Burkirk, who's our remove access facilitator. To my far right, uh, Kareen Hatchers, Hatch is our secretary. More members of the CD, we have Tim Schneider, Mark Tolbert, Men Van Lincoln, I'm Chuck Boyler, Chairperson. Kristen Smith, who's our zoning officer, Eric Cooper, representing MRB, and our attorney, Chris Nadler. And we're also, uh, have with the succeeding and representative of our code enforcement department, Mike Murphy. Thanks for coming out, Mike. Okay, uh. We'll, as I said, follow the agendas published, uh, but before we really get into the heat, the meat of the agenda. Uh, does anyone here want to address the board regarding an issue that's not on the agenda? This is our privilege of the floor, this is your chance to go off the agenda and address us. If I hear nothing here, nobody online, okay. Uh, let's move on to our agenda items then. Uh, first agenda item is twenty twenty five oh eighty four, it's a. It's an application for a special use permit from thirty four seventy five Lakeview Lane. And, uh, this public hearing, which is required under this application, was not advertised within the allowable timeframe, so therefore we will have to continue it. So it asks for a motion to continue to our October fourteenth meeting. Somebody so move.
So move.
Second. And again, motion second, let's move, uh, that under a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, next one. We have the same situation with forty five seventy five Middle Cheshire Road, a special use permit for a tourist home occupation under twenty twenty five oh eighty five. Once again, I would ask for a motion to continue to the fourteenth October, so move.
Next one.
Got a motion second, note for the discussion, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. And last but not least, regarding this public hearings, there's a special use permit for a ground mounted, uh, tier one solar array out on Middle Cheshire Road. And that's under CPN twenty twenty five oh eighty eight. So once again, uh, the advertising was not done in time, so we need a resolution to, uh, continue. So.
Second.
Oh, I guess just, is anybody here for any of those three public hearings?
I was hoping not.
For the record, there's nobody here for those public hearings.
Yeah.
They won't be back in the fort, it's not that they would know.
Okay, thanks for checking, Chris. All right.
Um, did we finish?
Oh, did we vote? We did not vote. Then I'll ask.
Motion, second.
We should, second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, always opposed. It is continued, thank you, Tim. All right. Let's get into, uh, the meeting where we, hopefully people are here. Uh, twenty twenty five oh ninety two, our engineering representing Molly Coons and Peter Coons. Uh, property of thirty seven eleven County Road sixteen. Uh, site plan approval for a partial tear down and new addition to a single family home in the RLB district. I believe you're Wendy Mahar. What do you mean, Wendy? Tell us a little bit about the project.
Uh, the clients are proposing a small two hundred and thirty plus square foot additions over the existing house footprint. And they're looking to, it currently has a open deck. They're looking to do a cover deck with an addition above that, so they're adding square footage to their home, uh, living space, if you will. Uh, we're looking to match the existing roof line. We're looking to, uh, actually better the lock coverage and we're looking to, um. So keep the same building height. Uh, we have gone through the process of the calculations. Went through the calculations with code enforcement and your building department, so we are, in fact, keeping the building height the same and within compliance. They are changing access slightly on the north side of the house. Um, but for the most part, there's nothing changing on the site itself. We have been before Environmental Conservation Board with some very minor comments. We have been before, uh, MRB, Mr. Cooper provided some comments in which we addressed as well as code enforcement, which we adjust all of them. I'm happy to talk through any of those responses, um, but I'd like to entertain any questions you might have.
Uh, Wendy, could you tell us a little bit about compliance with shoreline guidelines in terms of, uh, what the new addition kind of look or have, uh, from the lake?
So currently, there's a large tree, uh, that is on the north side. Right, right north side of the house or lake side. And, um, we did send pictures in both from a aerial view as well as from the front or rear elevation, I should say, for your township. And the tree is gonna remain. Uh, we're gonna have to trim it slightly and we did provide photos on the small amount that will be trimmed back. As far as, um, other landscaping on the lot. Uh, there's a little bit in the north corner that they could add landscaping, there is a little bit of landscaping there already. Um, as far as the south side, there's really not much room to place any landscaping on that side, so really what is there is what they're anticipating keeping. But, um, there's, there's not a lot of room for anything else. That is the largest tree pretty much in the whole neighborhood, I mean, they, they tend to be keeping it.
Mm-hmm. Your lot coverage was not changing or actually going down, is this the one?
It was, yeah, I have. I had technical difficulties before my, I left, I don't, you could take that up for me, I don't.
Anyone recall? I, I, I think it was right around with the existing lot coverages.
Yeah.
Uh. Anything I noticed, uh, Kim, if you go back to the site plan?
Uh.
Yeah. Uh, that area down there that's a beach area?
Yes.
Uh, do they need that much beach area? I was thinking, and the reason I was thinking that is because they have that grass strip, um, sort of to, a little further to the north.
Mm-hmm.
And a possible continuation of that grass strip along the back, uh, so that sort of decreases a little bit of the beach area, I think would soften, soften the look up a little bit. And give them a little more yard area and, uh, provide a little more absorption.
Yes, I have Peter and Molly Coons here.
Yeah.
If they would like to speak on, you know, they would, I believe, like to put some of that back to lawn, you mean?
Yeah, I'm sure we'd be more than happy to look at that and add some more area of grass or whatever we can potentially put there.
Well, the question is, do you need all that beach area?
No. You're not.
Oh, that's, okay.
No.
We do not use it.
Okay.
For, it's not like sandy beach out on the ocean.
No.
No.
It's a weekend.
It hurts my feet to walk on it.
It's more like, uh, like pebbles.
Yeah, it's like.
It's like being beach, I mean, it's the beach in New England.
Fresh.
Yes, yeah. Have more.
Well, if you would consider that, in fact, I think if the word is so inclined, we require to maybe have that installed as part of the, the work that's being done out there.
How, when you say require it, like, like what percent, like, how does that look like?
Sort of, sure, sitting here and drawing on a plane, uh. Would a continuation of the grass area that's currently there, if you go back to the picture, I guess, Kim. I think there's an overhead.
So there's a, so there's the grass, and then there's, uh, like a retaining wall, not like a retain, a retaining wall that's concrete. And then, yeah, and then there's a stone wall. And then there's, it drops down about a foot, foot and a half, and then there's that, the beach that goes into the water. And then, um, so you could extend it probably from. You know, you could pick a, a good point where it is and extend it, so.
We can show you.
Yeah, we gotta get it back in there.
Yeah, so if you're like, so like the middle, well.
Five one seventeen.
Wait, see where the kayak is?
Mm-hmm.
If you went up like a quarter from the front, you could probably do grass model back there. But you can see how the grass and then the concrete block on the upper, that's, know where the tree is.
Mm-hmm.
The, if you extended the grass, you'd be in the water, so you can't really.
No, no, you still need some sort of.
So you have to pick a, you pick a point and, and then build backwards, can certainly do that.
Maybe a third of it?
Yeah, whatever.
Chuck, what's, what's the thought process, you're looking to slow down, slow down water going?
Uh, a little more, you know, stem order mitigation, that's part of it. Certainly, you know, the beach area has some value as far as absorption, but nothing like grass, and I think but, and as I said, soften the view from Hollyville.
But does it, what, does it matter if? Does it matter if we go this way or this way, is it just a, you know what I mean?
I, I just thought it looked more appropriate to go north to south. Sure. Or have it, the grass actually from the back of the house. So toward the lake.
If we, if we pull up picture five one seven two, it might help as well. Part, part of the goal here is to slow down the water that comes from the property towards the shore. Uh, it's numbered five one seven two.
Is it the second tab or the?
The one you have open thing.
Oh, is it open, right there?
The post tab.
Oh, oh.
Yeah. So when, when you look at this, the, part of the goal that truly two things that we're trying to achieve, slowing down the water that comes towards the lake from the roadside. And that would be, I mean, you're not gonna eliminate, it almost looks like there's on that picture, it looks like there's a piece of wood or something, even if you could do from that part back. And see, then it'll slow down that top swell that comes in with grass, will slow down the infiltration of any water that's coming from the other side.
Yeah, I think it's like railroad ties.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
Yeah.
That, what, what also then happens is if I make, when, once that's green, it'll disappear visually from the lake, and that's a big part of the goal, is that you have that piece of, disappear. Just to help understand that.
Yeah, I mean, we could use that as a point, the, that wood, that's.
Would that, Chuck, would that achieve?
Yeah. Trying to figure out a way we can define it as a condition rather than saying, put it on the plan, come back in a month, uh, two weeks, I, I don't want to do that.
I don't want to do it.
So if we can agree on a limit.
If you go to the site plan, is it like, probably like the six eighty eight elevation is? The high water mark.
Your, uh, your downspouts are splash blocks, I guess. And so, I mean, this would also help absorb some of that, the water coming off the splash box.
Are you looking?
Uh, initially, uh, it's, uh, but. I see, I noticed like the edge of water, but that's just the data you observe it. That seems to be right.
Yeah, it's right there.
Right around where the eyes probably are.
Yeah, if you wanna go.
Right, yeah.
You know, the way you can below that. So if we stay a public closer to the house. Maybe a third of the gravel there, yeah, so that for us, we can transition it nicely above the major water.
Boy, if make the condition, will be added per discussion to the satisfaction of the planning board chair prior to um, signature. That way, the engineer can actually figure out, you know, so we're not planning, we're not designing in the room.
Think you might have something convenient to, to applicant, and also save the purpose that we're looking.
Yeah, and have it designed until, use your judgment and just know that he'll review it.
Oh.
For this discussion, does that make sense?
As long as the, as the boards come from.
Comfortable.
Yeah.
Had decision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that takes care of that, uh. Okay, so the, uh, looking at Mr. Smith's, uh, elevations, the, again, the face toward the lake. Uh, don't pull that up, the architectural. Trying to get this, you know, make sure everyone understands the, uh, the look it's gonna have regarding the windows, I assume you're gonna carry the same color siding, the white? Or you're gonna change? Good.
That's all you wanted to be, to keep it a little, no.
Now, I was gonna have a trick question. Like, I'm not, I have, for the record, I am not putting that like this.
No.
Uh, he is, uh, yeah, it's the, the spider.
No, I'm, yeah.
You're going to us a more natural, earthy.
Give like a nice shake shingle, like with a darker color.
Like a cedar type of look?
Okay.
Fine, yeah.
Excellent.
Yep.
That's, I mean, I'm, I'm not married to that, but that's what's in my head, it won't be that, like, what it is now.
Okay, again, this sort of applies to how we look at shoreline guidelines in terms of.
They don't look great weight.
I don't like it either.
No, I don't, it'd be great weight. I don't like the vinyl either.
I trust your discretion.
Yeah.
You, Mr. Smith, all right, just wanna make sure you're clear on that, uh. Or anything else you folks are looking at?
Uh, damaging downspouts where they're going directly into the lake.
They are going to splash box.
Just splash.
For lawn and each area before they reach the lake.
Good.
Anything further to?
Uh, you adjust the.
Okay.
There's a half inch pipe that shows on the drawing next to the retaining wall down the lake.
That exists in utility?
It just says a half inch pipe. I didn't see it on site, but on the, the existing site plan.
Which, where?
Next to the mason retaining wall, says there's a half inch pipe.
Could be a property, is it right on the line?
Yeah. Okay, got it, makes sense.
Or like a state, more, not, not a.
Yeah, I was looking for.
Not on my drawing showing, because we added, Eric wanted us to add the existing utilities, which we did, so.
Got it.
Okay, as far as third parties, uh, you're working with the DC on the JD status, or?
So the timeline for that is we submitted the second of July. Uh, ninety days from that would be the thirtieth of September, which is next week.
Hmm, true.
And if we don't hear anything, we do that certified ten day letter, business day. So, so far, I don't know about you.
About a hundred and ten days.
Yeah, so, um, but yeah, that was submitted quite a while ago. We're almost there, one more week.
Eric, you have a condition or is that something, it's in maybe in your?
It was down a condition, we had, I really had it. So.
Mm-hmm. Hmm. Uh, you got your ship a letter, I saw that, no, in fact, uh. MRB had a question about the retaining ball, uh, retaining wall height or design, excuse me, it's the building height and the.
Design, yeah, well, a, the zoning officer addressed the building height, turns out it's not an issue. Um, and then we noted that there was a six, I'm retaining wall, I think in the plan, it was removed.
So in order for us to, I guess, if we had to calculate it differently, we were gonna add retaining walls kind of framing that lower level.
Yeah.
To make grade and building height. But since it was already made in building height and we calculated the way it used to be calculated or is being calculated, there was no longer a need for that retaining, so that's why I was.
Yeah.
Okay, and you confirmed the, uh, the tree there will be trimmed and protected as far as while the construction is done around the root system and all?
Yeah, we proposed, uh, we presented, I should say, different pictures showing the small area that would be just turned back a little bit away from the house. It's so large.
And it's tight in the front, but you're not doing out, anything out front, so.
We are not.
Status quo there, I guess.
Yeah, really the improvements are within the, the, the.
Sure. Uh, ECB is, was mentioned, uh, was concerned that they can show the landscaping or any landscaping was these species. Uh, concerned about runoff to the lake and hopefully we can control it somewhat with the, uh, additional, uh, impervious grass. Uh, I think it pretty well covers it. Hmm. Code, you had nothing, I, I, I didn't see anything from you.
Everything that we sent to Mar was addressed, we got a response later for all of our comments.
Yeah, very good. All right, anybody in the audience want to address the board regarding this application? If not, I think we're ready to move on, um. So we have a secret type two, and, uh, we can put that together with the resolution for the site plan. Someone's so inclined.
I'll make that motion, Chuck, for CPN twenty five dash zero nine two three seven one one, County Road sixteen. Uh, seeker type two combined with single stage site plan. With seven conditions.
Two additional conditions, so the total.
Or, can you read those back?
Yep, uh, condition seven, uh. Site plan shall be revised to replace portions of the gravel beach with grass, not to replace, consistent with discussions of planning more at the September twenty third, twenty two thousand meeting, and to the satisfaction of planning board chairperson. Then condition eight, fire decided by the planning board chairperson, uh, Eric C D C layers, regarding your review of termination of what, and then the issue of restriction on termination, um, and further review if necessary, so you're right about the time.
With eight conditions.
Okay, in the conditions, uh, did I get a second?
Second.
Okay, motion a second for the discussion, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Thanks, Wendy.
Thank you.
Coons.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Does that mean we're good to go?
You're good to go. Next, next you talk to that guy.
Great.
That was, thank you. Hi.
All right.
You take my sign out there, it says.
You can take it down now. Uh, next we have CPN twenty twenty five oh ninety three, uh, Teresa Smith has property at forty one hundred. County Route sixteen, it's a site plan, uh, for the construction of a sixty inch tall, three hundred and thirty five foot long retaining wall in front of the property along the county red.
Hi.
Oh, you know what?
Good, Jeff Smith.
Jeff, good evening. So what do you want to do upfront?
Well, basically, uh, if you drive past the, uh, site, you'll notice very steep, uh, hill there. That, uh, I guess we're calling a health, my kids are calling it a health and safety, so if the old man doesn't have a heart attack, uh, more than one. And, uh, and when my kid does it on his, uh, on our zero turn, that thing goes on two wheels up in the air, and so they said, well, let's, uh, let's try to do something about it, so. Um, what we're proposing is basically a, uh, a large, um, and landscaper. Architect is here that can probably put it in better words, but large slabs of stone to be able to eliminate the, uh, the mowing and, and that, uh, that big slope.
And. Well, uh, fine, uh, I guess, have you been talking to the county at all, you've been talking to the county, right? I think I saw something about you talked to Mr., Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
And, uh, how, how does he feel about this project?
As, as far as I know, I'm ready, so, I'm okay, I'm working for Jeff.
Um, may I say it again?
Rennie, he's, uh, he's, yeah.
Thank you.
Great landscape, um. From what I, I gather, he has no opposition, I've talked to Christine about it quite a bit, and she's helped me very much with all this. Um, we're not used to having to apply for site approval, planning or anything like that, so it's kind of new to me also, she's helped a lot, so. Um, but I did meet with both Katie, maybe Kate and Garrett onsite. Uh, both work for the county.
Mm-hmm.
And they've suggested a few things, uh, changing the stair system that's there now, which comes very close to the road. We were willing to push that back off, off of the right away. Um, and I believe there was one other thing, um, you remember what it was, Jeff?
Um.
Oh.
Oh, the mulch.
The mulch, yeah. So we were proposing stone mulch along the, the road. Right now, it's grass and it's actually in pretty poor condition. Uh, there's weeds, there's grass, there's rock, um, there's a culvert there that's actually crushed, so it really doesn't work at all. We were proposing to eliminate all that. Um, make it a, a much nicer swale and then use a road fabric to stabilize and then also a stone mulch, um, right up against the, the edge of the road, not the road itself, but the apron of the road.
Hmm.
Um. Not only to make it look attractive, but also let the water to flow. Right now, it fills that ditch up and actually just comes across the road. So the county was not happy with the mulch, only because if they ever have to do, clean that ditch out, they have to take that mulch away and then they won't pay for it, be brought back in.
I think I read that that happened to a neighbor, oh, he went and did that and it caused them an issue for me.
Yeah, yeah. So what we're thinking about doing now is actually along the base of the wall, which is about ten to twelve feet off the road, apron, is to create a small planning there, either crown vet or some type of uh, planning that will be not invasive, but will cover that area and make it look a little bit nicer and neater and cleaner. So they don't have to do maintenance down there and make it look a little more attractive.
Yeah, I, I think that was my, my biggest concern from planning board standpoint, I mean, as far as the structure of the wall and where it's located. Um, you're dealing with the county on that, because it's mostly in the roadway.
Yeah.
Um, but as far as how it looked and the, the aesthetic it would have from the lake. Um, it, it, it is a six, a five foot high barren stone wall.
Yeah.
And to try to get some sort of look to it that, uh, sort of soften that, again, going back to try to soften the look from the lake. Some sort of ivy or something.
We're, we're proposing a planning on top, because actually what it is now, it's, it's quite steep, it's close to forty five degrees, which is almost impossible to maintain.
Yeah.
Um, the first boulder, they're roughly twenty four inches deep.
Do you wanna scroll down to the detail of the wall? Yeah, there you go.
So that first boulder is actually embedded about twelve to fourteen inches below the ditch line. Um, so it's, it's really not a sixty inch high wall, it's more like a fifty or forty five inch wall. Um, extending up. And then at the base, at the foot of that wall, is where we're proposing to do some type of some type of planning along that. That will elevate maybe up to, two feet up at the base of the wall.
Mm-hmm.
And then the top of the wall, we're also proposing a planning that will allow some type of vegetation to flow over that.
I, I guess you have to show us that, I mean, just to tell us here in the meeting, uh, it doesn't get memorialized, um, so we would make that a condition and the acceptance of the application.
Is, uh, is the, is the, the face of the, the wall gonna be textured and even? They'll be natural boulders. Each boulder is roughly, uh, they vary in size, but they're roughly two thousand pounds a piece. It's a.
So this is not a block system?
No, this is not a modular system, this is a natural wall, retaining wall, yeah.
Okay, um, just looking at that detail and looked to me like it was not a block, block system.
What we're planning on doing is to can lever those back a little bit, six to eight inches from first boulder to second boulder.
So it creates a little more of a step, so it's not a big. Straight wall up and down. What blocks them? Uh, we use GeoGrid. We use GeoGrid. We also put it on about a fourteen inch base of crushed gravel, compacted gravel. And then GeoGrid will go between each folder. And tie back into the bank. So the bank has to be cut back and then there's backfill reinforced backfill material along with natural or clean stone. Uh, embedded with a filter fabric allows water to hit the back of the wall. Go through the fabric and then hit the stone and then we have a six inch drain at the bottom of that, which seeks daylight at each end. Back into into the split. Is there any examples of this elsewhere in town? Hmm, I I truly don't know. I know there's a lot of, uh, boulder systems along the lake all over the place. A lot of them are a little bit smaller. They're a little bit more used as a foundation retaining wall. Those are, are they mortared in? Nope, nope. Note, they're all, they're, again, they're two thousand pounds, so it's it's just sheer force that keeps them from moving. And they will not move. They they just. And we also have a cleaning of the back a little bit.
Something like this, is that what you're proposing? That type of a stack?
Yeah, only. None of us, yeah. Yeah, we wouldn't do it. But, um. Don't know if I have an example. I don't think I do of what I can. Show the. Try to go to areas. So we we did build a routine wall. So I, oh. It's moving on. So. You can pass it down. Here's here's an example. This is actually right around the corner on Hill Hill Crest Drive. And so, okay. My mind boulder round this giant, okay, those are. I guess flat surface. They're actually, they're guillotine. Um, when they're when they're, um, porrid, they're guillotined on each end, top and bottom. So they're pretty flat. They're about as flat as their desk. All right, that's what allows them not to move. And and with the sheer weight of that and the GeoGrid that. Things runs that into the bank. That that will lock them in place. Okay. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
I'm probably going to. Get some of those photos into our file. Okay, so so we understand again, the thing. Yeah, it's kind of. That that's a, that that's a modified stone, butt stone. I wouldn't s- I wouldn't say molded. Because it's it's not a boulder you're going to pull out of a farm. Oh, no, 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 it's a quarry. It's a quarry. Crop, yeah. And the armor stone is a. Qualified name. I mean, that's a. Name of the stone itself, the company that makes it is Armor Stone. And if you go on their website.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. See quite a few samples. Okay, uh. So again, we. You talked about putting the over the top, over the over the top, starting from the bottom up. Softening the the look of the stone, uh, but it'll certainly serve your purpose in terms of holding the the bank up. Uh. The water and sewer line. Did you do a four one one or whatever? So the water, there's there's no sewer involved. It's, uh, actually on the opposite side of the road, I believe, maybe not. Uh, but that was not even marked out for for, uh, our stakeout. The only thing that we've come across is the gas line. The water line actually comes in at the south near Bob Johnson's house. Um, and then comes kitty corner up to. Up to the residence, up to Jeff's house. So there's no utilities under the wall. It's, either out. Other than the gas line. There is, there is some, um. Tire work from the house, the downspout leads run down. They're they're also crushed at the road. But we we plan to have them also daylight right through the wall. So there won't be any water buildup due to the, you know, the downspouts. And I believe there was two or three different locations where that occurred. And are you you and Bill, Bill Brogdon? Is you, yeah. Comfortable that the swell design you have in the front, and I'm sure the county will. Check this out, is adequate to carry the runoff. Because it's got a pretty good flow. Must sound. So what, the way, the way Garrett presented it to me is most of the water comes from the south of Jeff's property. It's that culvert and then kind of works its way north. Um, but again, it can't get through. So there's a stair system right there. Right. It it can't get through there because there's a poured concrete slab. And there's about an eight inch culvert pipe underneath that slab that's completely flat. So essentially, we, and I asked the county, can we put a culvert in? And cover it? Just a big culvert pipe, we would eat that cost and he didn't want to do that. Anyway, she performed. So she wants it to keep as an open ditch. And again, we're still going to put a culvert in across where the stair system comes down. Uh, because there's no way for them to access, that access their, their dock across the street. Okay. So you know you have to get a permit from the county.
Yeah.
Uh, we talked again one more time to emphasize the, uh, the landscaping, um. The code department, uh, they they did ask, and I think you changed it to a silk sock rather than a soap fence. For the erosion control.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for doing that. Sir mates, we talked about Jim Fletcher, our highway and the water superintendent, uh. Was a little bit concerned about the water service to the house. It might have to be lowered. Yeah, and and there's, there's no stakeout that goes across where we're we're proposing the the wall at all. It comes in from the south, uh, comes across the street. And then I believe it services Bob's house and then it probably goes kitty corner right up the up to Jeff's house. But there's no stakeout showing Jeff's utility there. Well, you'll you'll do four on one and.
Oh, yeah.
You're at the mercy of that and they don't mark it right. Speaking of utilities, uh, there are a couple utility poles. I don't think they're showing the plan. How will they be affected, uh, by the top of the bank? We we shouldn't be within five feet of those. Okay. Roughly, and I planned to to, uh. Communicate with our genie, just to guarantee.
Yeah.
There is a guy wire that. It doesn't come towards the road, but it it runs parallel with the line. And we also want to make sure that that's. Okay. All all set too. Alrighty, uh, so that takes care of the third party reviews and anything else that the board has regarding this application? Is there anyone in the audience here? The one out there, Kim.
Yes, I have a comment. I would suggest against, uh, Crown Vetch. I know we've had some other people on, um, County Route sixteen use low grow cement, which is a native she's.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that might.
We we use that a lot as well, yeah. And I don't think Teresa liked Crown Vetch anyways, so.
No, and you're right, it's. I wouldn't want to use it. It's kind of an invasive species.
Yeah. Okay, Nick say on the Crown Vetch. Okay. This is no Crown Vetch. Uh. Anything else, Kim, that you have? I I don't think the ECB reviewed, so. Just want to make sure. Uh, all right, so. Solicited as a group and the board's already act.
Yeah.
We've got a type two seeker and a site plan for. Mr. Smith. Someone even give me a motion on both.
I'll plan, no. I'll do the the type two seeker and the single stage site plan at. Four one zero zero County Route sixteen, CPN twenty five zero nine three. Um, on the single stage site plan, we had eight conditions, but I believe we have one additional related to.
Condition nine, plans to be revised to show those lanes leading on top of the closer table. I assign that to the chairperson.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Second, again, second. Uh, condition five. I guess we still need that. Even though the sewer's on the other side. Okay, leave it in. Because there is a lateral. Okay, I have a motion a second on favor.
Aye.
Post. Not. Garrett. Thanks, fellas.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Okay. Next, we have CPN twenty twenty five oh ninety five. Uh, Carrie and Tyler here. I will try their last names. Uh, thirty five oh one Middle Cheshire Road. Uh, they want to build a new house. And they're asking for site plan approval and. It's Carrie Tyler and.
This is actually my wife, Ashley.
Oh, Ashley.
So, um, we are not even close on the land yet. We need approval to build before we can be close on the land. Which hopefully will be next week. Um, Carrie, that's the current owner.
Yes, I'm just the wife.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah.
I think you're trying to get the baby's name, weren't you?
That is.
So be so well behaved. All right, tell us, uh. Once you find the property, what you want to build?
Uh, so we're doing a, um. A modular ranch home, um. They use sixty eight by thirty two ranch, pretty good standard, um, there really nothing. Do extravagant with it. We have the garage on there for future. We're not doing it right now. Yeah, kind of later on, we'll do that later on. In general, I mean.
We did submit the elevation, so you should be able to see what it looks like. Um. Without the, yeah. It's your standard home, basically.
Yeah.
We're just looking to. Start to have a family here.
All right, well, uh. Yeah, if you bring out the site plan back again at some point.
You still, you had all the issues and.
Yeah, you submitted.
Yeah, they should be in there, but.
I didn't see him.
Uh, there may be. I'm not sure. I know I sent them in because they were approved before.
Yes.
Okay, um.
I do have a picture on my phone, the elevation, if you guys want to see that.
So you're dealing with a septic system?
Yes.
Are you making out with, uh, approval on that?
Um, so we have protest done. It's going to be a, uh. A. Yeah, like a partial raise system, be about two foot out of the ground, uh. Apparently it was a little wet back there. And, uh.
Water is already, they're good.
The water, the town was there for water, uh, for the people tests, uh, with approval of that. The site plan engineer came up for it.
Okay, um. Where the future garage is going to be, it's sort of between the end of the driveway and the house. Uh, just going to make that driveway for the time being?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we found out last time at the last meeting we were at that the we would have to apply for, um. A variance that the driveway kind of where we want it because it would be within ten feet of the property line like that. Uh, and that. As of right now, looking at it, would not really allow us room to turn into the garage if we do a side entrance garage like that. But we're just kind of doing the house, do a straight driveway for now and we'll we'll figure it out down the road, exactly what we want to do. And, you know, kind of start over the whole.
And you are ten feet.
Yes.
Yes.
Hey. Uh, the limits, the limits of disturbance. Take those shown to be forty thousand square feet down in the lower right hand corner. Um. It almost looks like the limits, limited disturbance is almost the whole property. Um, which is what about? Ninety thousand square feet. It's the the property itself.
It's under an acre total.
Oh, under acre.
Yeah, it's two point nine acres.
Oh, point nine eight.
Yes.
Okay. So. Where are the, where is the limited disturbance? Are you going all the way back to the back parking line?
No.
No.
Okay, first first, I'll be going back direct to the back of the septic, um. Other than that, nothing will be going back there.
All right, do you see where I'm talking about where it says a limited disturbance area? And it shows an arrow going. All the way back there. I I don't think it's your tent.
No.
And you shouldn't represent it as case, so. Uh, please correct that.
Okay.
And I. I don't think you show any soil erosion. Control. I, well. You're going to need, I think we have a requirement of a. E N S. In the condition. Yeah, soil stability issue control, surely. You come up with a surety, you need a plan, so. Going to need a plan for. Service, drive race ten feet.
Can you explain what that means? Sorry.
Yeah, we weren't told about any of that before, so.
Yeah, when you, when you go and turn up the soil and dig it up, uh, you're you're. Creating the potential with rains, runoff, and that's got to be controlled within a certain, uh. Parameter and it's usually done with a silk fence.
Okay. There was something on this page because they they wrote up a, if you scroll down, there's.
There might be a narrative as to.
Yeah, all the standard notes, he wrote everything that was required. Obviously, we can't read it.
Well, again, it's better shown on the plan. He would show it on the plan. That will be. That will be helpful. It's no big deal, but it's just, it's got to be there and the fellow over there sitting to your left. Your left or right, uh, will be looking for it.
Yeah, Chuck, I think that's my fault. I think this was on my list to review and I don't think I got to this, so.
Yeah, I saw no comments.
I think I started it, left for the day and never finished it.
All right, we we can do your job. Our future garage, I talked about Billy, why it is a ranch. Uh. Did you see Mr. Pity's Patty's letter at all? Okay, uh, he was the property behind you.
Okay.
And he is concerned about the runoff from the back of the property toward his barn.
Okay.
I'm here as well.
Oh, you're here. Okay, but maybe you can explain to us, uh, at some point, but I'll get to you in just a second, so. Okay, so we'll we'll address that as part of, uh. Floor, calling on the floor, driveway alignment across the street. Okay, uh. Does your plan show the, uh, site distance? I think you, I think it does. It's in an there form. It's not in the own plan itself. Usually, you know, out there to the driveway where it meets Middle Cheshire.
Mm-hmm.
It usually shows what what you can see in either direction. With a sort of a cross. And I think it's, if I recall on this application, it's listed.
It's a thousand.
Thousand feet either direction. So want to make sure you can get on your driveway.
Yes.
Uh, Jim Fletcher, no comments. Um, any other thing that we will require, and it's just something to be put on the plan, this area is in our. Uh, high priority sidewalk envisionment, vision net. Uh, area. And ultimately, the town wants the continued sidewalks all the way out to five and twenty from the back. In order to do that, we need the right of way to do that. So we would ask that, uh. Uh, you at this time, as part of your. Application, provide a fifteen foot easement. Along the front edge of the property to allow for that sidewalk. And that that has been confirmed with our highway superintendent. That that would be adequate, so that would be another condition, Eric. If it's okay with you folks, really. It'll, it doesn't change the looks at all. It's just something legally on the on paper in the courthouse.
Sure.
That provides for a future sidewalk, which. Sure, really, I have some.
Happy about a sidewalk.
Okay, uh, anything else, board? I'll get to Mr. Patty now. Patty, do you want to, uh, address the board regarding your concerns?
Sure, it's PD. Come right on up to the podium, sir.
Sure. Introduce yourself.
Yourself, in your name. So as he mentioned, that lot is very wet, especially in the spring. Fall and winter months, there's a decent slope to it as it stands now. Uh, and I learned my lesson because the lot that was sold to the south to Kevin's dragon, his wife. Had significant runoff, um, onto my property. Um, onto my property, uh, after the house was built, night. I failed to come to that meeting and failed to address any concerns I had, because I didn't think it was going to be an issue. Luckily, Kevin's a friend of mine, so he, being in the construction industry. Uh, took some drain pipe and diverted the water that was going onto my um. Uh, entryway, uh, my driveway and into the main area of my property. And diverted it towards the um hedgerow, to the south hedgerow, and it's worked out fine. Uh, so it hasn't been an issue since he took care of it, but I don't know these people, and I need to make sure that. The use of my barn and the access I have to my barn doesn't get flooded because of the um. Fill that they're gonna have to bring in, uh, the lot, they're moving to the north end of that corner there is very low. They'll have to bring in fill to get that level with the main portion lot. And then an elevated septic system is gonna put further pressure on diverting that water down towards my barn. Um, so I'm looking to have them put in some sort of a water mitigation system, uh, French drains. Um, a better swell, there's actually a swell that exists now, uh. Yeah, what's that blue line? There's a swell that's right in here. I can actually see a little dimension shadow there, uh, that exists to divert some of the water now. Um, so maybe that can be uh enhanced a little bit. Um, and maybe. Dry creek bed or dry wells towards the rear of the property to um control some of the the water runoff. Before it gets to the moon. Could you my area?
Describe what the neighbor did, can you kind of show us on the?
Yeah. Do you have south, southern most image, can you go up this way? Okay, so this is my access, and then I access my barn through the back of this. This property, this property, and so his septic system is right here, and runoff was. Coming in to this direction, so he ran uh drain tile towards. This hedgerow and got it out of my main area that I use to access my property. And I use this property for mainly hunting and agricultural purposes. So he was kind enough to do that on zone nine.
And you say that the the property in the back is wet, but your driveway is elevated to that barn that it does?
No, it's not, it's not really elevated, it's actually a bit of uh probably a similar elevation to. From here to here, probably a similar elevation, so any of this runoff from the septic system, their home, their. Drain pipe, their their. Home roof runoff is is going to drain in this direction. So there's, I'm hoping to solve that by some sort of water mitigation techniques. That you guys can suggest.
What's to the north of your barn, where that?
Just a hedgerow and somebody else's property is that field. So I own. This twenty five acres with woods and this kind of a field.
If as part of this project, they constructed a diversion berm. So along the back of the property line to kick it, assuming that the land falls to the north, which I guess it does.
Um, it's relatively flat, uh, I mean, they could.
I'm just trying to intercept the water before it comes across the property line. And on the the main part of the field or south of your barn and get it to the, up into the hedgerow somewhere.
Right, ideally, that'd be the perfect situation, because I actually personally put drain tile all all around my barn. And diverted it to that northern um hedgerow border, uh, so that. I actually, when I built the barn, not realizing how much water it was going to. Uh, how how wet it would be, actually walked into my barn and had six inches of water on the floor of my barn.
So we call.
Yeah. So I uh, I did a drain tile all around my barn and then had the water come out.
Can you just go back to the site plan, I guess, and just see. How it works in terms of contours? Yeah, it's. A little bit of a bowl in there, I guess, the. Across, I guess the low point is like mid part of the uh eastern property line. I was just thinking possibly running it, anything that comes off. From the west would be diverted to the north up into the hedgerow. It looks from the topo. If they diverted it to the hedgerow, it's gonna wrap it back around and go right into the barn.
Yeah, I think, I think they're gonna need to have, you know, some uh dry wells installed to. To kind of capture uh some of that water that's running running down, that might solve some of the problem and.
Okay, well, then we can go to plan B, which would be. Is like uh im- implementing some sort of stormwater management system off the roof drains. Try wells. We may be talking Chinese to you, but uh, uh, it's just some way to control the runoff coming off your roof. Because right now, it's a, it's a meadow, it's a field, it's it's a.
The house.
And absorbs all that water, when you put this blacktop. In your house with the roof and also disturb the land for the septic system. You're gonna create more runoff, and all we're trying to do is control that, so it doesn't go back to Mr. Patty's.
Does that help to know that it's like the house and the septic are roughly in the trees, like we're going into the tree line?
I see that.
Yeah, it was definitely do, we'd have to redesign everything with the the swell definitely won't work, the septic's gonna be. Right at that swell, and I think you're gonna have all the runoff coming directly right out of the septic into it. Where the swell is actually on the property right now, and I also think the property, if you're looking at it, actually pitches. To the east, but also goes south more than north, so I don't even know how we would get that water to go north without bringing up. A lot of grade. Because actually, the the southeast corner is, if you're out there, is is the lowest point.
It's a percent slope. It's a slope, yeah.
We don't know which.
It's a slope, yeah.
Yeah, which, what color is what?
Yellow is four to nine.
We don't know which direction was.
You want the elevation, so, right? Well, it's, it's, it's all. Slowed to your property, if you get the lowest price.
Yeah, all drains. Front left corner to. Upper right corner. Did the uh. Are the existing, are the proposed plans show any proposed contours?
Yes.
Uh, a little bit around the house, I guess, you know.
Yeah, where is proposed converted?
Nothing over, nothing over the septic, though, the way you tied it into the. Oh, I said, septic field.
So roughly two feet. Roughly two feet.
It's not a true respect system, it's a modified.
Yes.
Yeah, I knew it wasn't a sand mound per se.
Yeah.
See, Chuck, if I just can for a second, so I just looked at the plans the first time, it does look like. The water that went out abruptly from centerline of the road is gonna be diverted north around the structure. And then further north around the septic following that shrub, up close from brush. The southeast corner, in my opinion, does look like it would sheet flow uh primarily to the southeast corner of that lot. So, just looking at it at first glance, it does not look like the improvements aside from that raised septic, which. I'm gonna guess is. Less than a thousand square feet, room area, um, is really pointed in that direction, that northeast part. Was the site's plan submitted with no. Stormwater management, the roof. So, all we're really gonna have to try to mitigate is stuff coming off the roof and the driveway, right? Is that accurate? By getting that right?
Yeah, and the septic system.
Isn't that kind of absorb?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Probably changing contours, but yeah, once it's built, functioning and matured, it's.
Increased, increased runoff is only coming house and the driveway, yes? Alright, so.
Well. I don't know, I don't know all the technicalities of the septic system, but I can tell you with the Brag's septic system goes right. At the bottom of their septic system, where I was getting the most runoff.
Well, adding grass doesn't increase runoff. Increase the quantity, yes or no? If adding grass surfaces does not increase one a deed of runoff, then am I right?
You're correct.
I'm just a lawyer, a plan engineer. So we need to do is mitigate, have the applicant come back with a plan to mitigate the the runoff from. The impervious surface, yes?
Yes.
We can't guess at it right now, because we don't know.
And we're not gonna design it.
We're not gonna do that, design. Problem solved.
Okay, well, we're gonna have to do something there, I mean. You've got to show us something that's gonna control the runoff, uh, protect Mr. Patty's property, and uh. You know, again, we're not, we're not gonna design it for you, we can sit here and say what if, and you can do this, but uh it's up to you and your engineer to. Come up with that, so I guess we'll have to continue the application now.
That's something that's.
Based on what you said when you first started, uh, that's gonna put a rank on your.
Yeah, they're probably gonna back out on her. We'll be on about ten thousand dollars.
Just as a thought, you could condition it on it. We've done that before, with this one, so actually, with the approval of my office stating that for meeting such conditions, are you guys both?
Yeah, cuz like you said, it always comes down to a site plan that you said that you reviewed.
Very clear and.
Alright, folks, we got, we got two meetings going on here, uh. Uh, Murph, uh, Murph has suggested that uh. Consider a condition whereby he would, he would, as part of the building permit and the play plan approval. Or not site plan approval, but the grading permit, uh, review this to make sure that, no.
I would recommend. No, it'd be a condition of your approval tonight.
No, that's why I said.
Condition of our approval is reviewed.
But no, I recommend against it, to then to get into, well, we need a building permit, so let's just condition it on further, let's just keep conditions.
Says you've had it before.
You did it last year. Yeah, it turned into a disaster, didn't it, like two meetings ago?
No.
Oh, I would recommend against it, but if you're both gonna do whatever you want.
Is the condition.
We're not looking to get our building permit right away, we're still in the process of getting blueprints, and that could take a couple months.
To get this done and done right. Is my recommendation.
And Anthony did mention in the storm, that the site is actually, there is a requirement for, not one of the design storm, but twenty thousand square feet of. Disturbance.
Mm-hmm.
Greater than two thousand feet from the water, requires um. Navigation to learn, so I'm trying to put things out, but there is something in the site design criteria that might influence designing, or probably something that. Should be looked at, at least, but we didn't review it, so I don't know.
Well, and the other thing was, there was no solar roof control shown on the plan too. Um, uh, I, I, you know, the advice of our attorney, I I guess we have to continue. Sorry, but uh. We're here to do a job, and our job is to make sure everything's done right and uh, and done legally, and uh. I I think we're gonna have to seek a motion for it anyway. That would be to the fourteenth of October. Uh. Anybody else move, like a motion? Second?
Second.
Okay.
So, just to confirm, if we move to the fourteenth of October.
We need by, we need by the seventh, a re uh resubmitted plan showing.
That updated information by.
I don't think it's a lot of. Yeah, it shouldn't, the plan, it's not a lot of runoff, but.
They gotta show how they're gonna control it, they gotta show where the erosion and segmentation control is, um.
Will the notes of what we need be uploaded into the cloud?
You weren't, you weren't taking notes right now?
Alright, I'm motion a second all in favor. Okay. Uh, next, we are moving on to twenty twenty five one oh three. One of the reasons uh, Murph is here tonight is to walk us through uh what we're all is asking for. In terms of a amended site plan approval. And I'll just read what's stated here, requesting amendment from the conditions of twelve and thirteen, conditions twelve and thirteen issued under. CPN twenty twenty three oh thirty eight, later amended by twenty twenty three one forty five, as well as the issuance of a waiver from item. Eight point six, so the. Town of Canetag was site design criteria specific requirement regarding dedication. Part of the issues of the building permits. So what's happening out there, Murph?
Yeah, so, as you guys know, Piercebrook, it's a three phased something, right? It's phase one, phase two A, phase two B, two A was dedicated, that is currently under construction for homes. Uh, slated to be completed uh early spring, alright? Uh, phase two B is actually broken ground, they have started master grading, uh, and they are preparing the road base for the development. As you guys know, New York State code, or may not know, New York State code is changing, effective December thirty first, twenty twenty five. From what we currently are under with the twenty twenty code to the new twenty twenty five. Part of that new code is a ban on all fossil fuels for new construction. If they are able to be issued permits before that date, I, December thirtieth, two thousand twenty twenty five. They will be issued or read the current code, and they will not be subject to that fossil fuel. Uh, the developers and I sat down in numerous meetings, not just my staff, also planning staff to try and figure this out. Uh, there's also many more changes that would require not just new site plans and amended approvals. But building drawings for people who've already bought the homes, um, quite a lot. I I won't speak for the developer on the investment that it would take. Uh, but they, in conjunction with staff, discovered that we could go through. Not only the waiver from the site design criteria, but because there were two conditions within the amended approval, requiring dedication prior to the first issuance. They're seeking to have those amended and the waiver issued, so that my office can issue those permits. Before December thirty of two thousand twenty five, with the condition being amended to dedication prior to the first issuance to see. Issuements, the first C M, or certificate of documents. It's the same process, it doesn't change their schedule any one bit, it just allows our office to better kind of aid development. Uh, increase housing stock without. It just allows our office to better kind of aid to help and uh increase housing stock without. It's putting a drag on the.
From a timing standpoint, the town can't have dedication of the road. Even within those time constraints. Um Morel, the Morels. Have dedicated a lot of infrastructure in the town over the past thirty years. They know how to do it. Their lawyers know how to do it. I'm not concerned about that.
And I think this provision of dedication part of C O was recently done.
Yeah.
Because there was a problem with. Unimproved roads and houses being occupied.
Correct.
You do, and I guess with, as you said, with realm filter, they are, that this wouldn't happen. Here that at least. The road would be in a passable condition. I, yeah, I. He's gonna have to get the binder down at the very least. I mean, not to.
So in this, yeah, so dedication, we only require binder. We still require all the infrastructure utilities, sidewalks, cutters. The only thing we don't have them do is a topco. It gives the construction vehicles to destroy that. Uh so they will have to have all that in place prior to the issuance of the first step in occupancy. They're still not planning to propose, you know. Moving forward with the construction of these homes, they're still keeping the same construction sequence. Of dedication in spring, starting construction immediately after. So that's what they have passed.
And their plan was to. Submit for, I mean, it's an enormous expense for them to submit for building for how many building permits? However, many building. They were gonna spread that, they were gonna pull permits as they were building. You know, per, you know, townhouse block, uh but now they're just, they're doing it this way, which is costly and. Uh we would have dedicated the road prior to the first one then.
With issuance.
You get that.
Long story short, it messes up our revenue for my department for next year, but talk to that with the works though.
How much would it cost them to have to implement the? The new standards per home?
You wouldn't even know.
Yeah, initial thoughts because.
I mean, it's just the money cost the buyer.
Yeah, biggest problem besides the fossil fuel ban, there's increased energy code initiatives that are estimated at fifteen dollars per square foot additional. To what the current construction. Uh they're also required to have sprinklers on their three unit buildings. Which is, you guys know, a huge proponent of those, but. This has already been approved since before I started with town. So.
This is a redesign, you know, when you're making all those. Change when your architects and your engineers are making all those changes. They realize, oh, we can't actually put that in this mechanical room. We need to add on to this. We need to. Move this building here and then you've got site plan revisions. And so the the soft costs and construction costs serve astronomical, soft costs serve us.
Okay. So we're understanding the issue.
Understand the issue. I wanna talk about something associated with the development. So. As we've watched this development get built out. The front elevations of the homes and the rear elevations of the homes look very different. So we have. At least two units that are in the senior U shed. Where the rear elevation is is facing the lake. Can we make a suggestion? That those rear elevations. Have a little more detail, more consistent with the front elevation view. Because that's what you're gonna look at from the.
Which two?
No, the the two, the first two on the right hand side. Those two. No, 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 no. They, the their rear, the back of the house will be facing the lake. And there's. It it's. The the front and the rear of those buildings look very, very different. We'll just leave it at that.
So I don't, you're not gonna see those from the lake. So we have a conservation easement over that. They can't clear cut any of that. And it's heavy vegetation.
You know it, look.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying that.
From the, from the top of that hill, you're gonna be able to see it.
Well, so. I understand your point. I guess my thing would say. I don't think that's a. Uh a life of this.
Oh, I don't actually, I I don't know that. I have a problem with that. We can ask, and I would think that the Morels. Will either propose, propose screening.
Yeah, I I know.
Something.
I think we.
Well, you know, they have a nice, they are beautiful development. From when you drive in, those, those homes are beautiful. They look a lot different if you're coming up twenty one. And you come to the intersection and you you look out over the backside of the section one. Not quite as pretty. And it's what it is, it had, the roof line is. All roof. Totally continuous for the full length of those units.
That's the end of. This is the last unit built, Mike?
I stand on my comment, you're not gonna see those from the lake.
No, no, but is it?
So.
Close to the last?
I don't know, Chris, to be honest with you, cuz they're not visible. There's two winter A that are.
Mike, I'm not asking anything about whether or not it's screened, screened, I'm saying. They're gonna build this way, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So those aren't sold yet.
Uh they might be. I mean, honest with you. They've got quite a few units already sold in two B. Uh especially those of the max.
Well. Why don't, Kristen, can you reach out to the developer and to the planning board who is willing to move forward? With your request. But as concerns.
Would they consider?
About those two units? And would would you consider? Mitigating that. You or addressing whether or not it can be seen. They've got engineers who can do it quick.
Right.
You know.
I do believe this was in senior U shed.
I think it is.
Oh, it was, it was discussed at length when we went through the site plan. Or the subdivision.
Yeah, the only ones I know of are the.
But it was.
And two buildings on two A. Those are visible because there's no wood liner. That's, there's nothing.
Are they that much higher?
Yeah, the lake is.
I guess, I don't know.
So Kristen, you can do that?
Yeah.
And you can copy Tim in on that email?
Great, thank you. Um I don't think it's an issue of seeing it from the lake. I think it's a matter of issue of seeing it as you're coming up. You know, twenty one or the extension. And I think, and I I try to remember the landscape plan for section two B, cuz I think there is. Landscape buffer along uh the extension parish. Cuz that was discussed, Tim, I think the back of those homes will be. Seen from the the road and is a way to pop it. Both from the property owner standpoint as well as motors. So I don't think, I don't think the property owners be looking. Back on the road.
Like I said, you know, when you drive in that development and I have nothing but good things to say about the development. Except for the backside of the, the homes don't look anything like the front side of the homes.
Alright, well, let's. Get back to the issue for tonight, uh. So people, uh board understands why those conditions would be amended. In order to uh. Finish out the project under the the current code. And if you don't have any objections to that, give me a motion.
Tim, are you comfortable going forward?
I'll make the motion to approve. The modifications. CPN. Twenty twenty five, one oh three. J L builders. And. There's no conditions for this, right?
I wrote the resolution as amended final section two A to the. Uh is the approval to modify those conditions of big explosive section. The previously approved condition says. Two A to be dedicated prior to the issuance of the first building. So those two conditions, there are two conditions that said essentially the same thing. I've added two conditions. Uh so the existing conditions modifies to remove reference to. Uh prior to first building current for two B. The same laying which is added saying that prior to first C O for two B. Then likewise for the second condition of duty set. So where there was two conditions, there's now four, making the differentiation between these conditions.
With that clarification.
Okay, I got a motion that it. So I got a second, Amanda. For the discussion, if not all in favor. Okay, takes care of that. Uh Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay. We're here to hear your request for a site plan extension. For your property out on forty nine, twenty five, kind of sixteen. And you got an approval. From us way back on the site plan. And. It expired, but you'd like to keep it active?
That's correct.
Uh I guess just tell us a little bit about. How you're making it out? Are we be able to move forward? Are we looking at something that's gonna become a reality here or?
Oh, yeah, we'll be moved forward as soon as we get the relay thrown.
One of the big miracle.
Okay, what's, what's?
Some interior design changes, and one of the handles is getting tiled right as the land, we need to get that to like mid-July. So we had to get a sound like letter with this, the approval of changes to. The pump tank system, and then because this system is three or four houses in the south. And he wanted to go back and forth and we did get that ladder, it's up the limit. And then there's a couple of things to clean up. We wanted to make sure before we push any further with the final. Design of that interior allows. We would indeed get that letter, because we need to get the letter. So that was the biggest holdup was getting that letter and the last kind of details and just missed that twenty fifth day.
So that was your last remaining condition?
Yeah, we, all the other work we know. We wrote, um I did all the changes, but then I needed, I forgot.
Kristen, can you confirm that any other conditions have been done?
I went to the whole check that the town engineer's comments have been addressed. I don't have that one checked off. There might have been. A note added to the plans that was stormwater.
Yeah, we went through all. So there is a new plan that was up.
Oh, okay, yeah, so it was a check. It was only three.
Okay, so within the the next ninety days or by December twenty second, everything should be. Both having you sit through our meetings, but we don't. Have to come out here again, so. And this would be the first extension.
Like get it closed in for the, for the weather.
I'm sure you would. Uh board have any issues with granting the extension? If uh not, give me a motion to grant extension.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion a second to grant Mr. Miller an extension of his site plan approval to December twenty second. And for you to finish that. You gotta vote all in favor. Now you got it.
Stormwater design criteria, it's not the zone of the design criteria, I think. Past five hundred feet from the lake is the two year, if you're over twenty thousand square feet of service has to do with two year. It's in the design criteria.
I'll put that in the resolution. Thanks. Okay, let me take care of this one last bit of. Boy, hopefully, uh it is, well, we have minutes from nine, nine minutes ago. Uh that Karen provided to us. The additions and corrections, do you think Karen at the? Top? Uh you didn't have the date, you had Tuesday. And I I marked it and it was so obvious, it went right by it, so.
Alright.
It's right at the top. And other than that, any further corrections to the minutes? If not, give me a motion. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh we have a. Release request real quick from. Uh the shepherds in the burks. At five oh oh nine, County Route sixteen. For sixty six hundred dollars uh to uh. I believe finish out their property. Yep, so someone uh. Is okay that with that, I have a sign off from code, I have a sign off on highway. I'm the remaining signature, so if you give me a motion, I'll sign it. Motion the second. For a discussion, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries twenty three. Okay, we are honored tonight to have. Mike uh here to uh. Make a presentation on. Environmental protection, town Canetag.
Okay.
And this was all Mike's initiative and I appreciate him coming forward with it and. I think he's giving us homework in this.
Just a little.
Nothing too crazy, I promise.
Alright, Mike, get the floor.
Alright, thank you, sir. So it's seven twenty six, goal is to get out of here at eight. Does that sound good, everyone? Eric's laughing, he knows something's gonna happen, but he's.
Amanda's gonna make a motion.
So some brief overview, um. The development staff, this goes back probably a year. We've been talking about doing this. Kind of do some presentations to each board, right? Planning board, zoning board, E C B. Uh hopefully the town board to kind of go through the environmental protection. Aspect of what we do, right? Just tonight, you guys saw several applications who were suggesting stormwater mitigation. Items like that, you know, we've got a lot of code. That gets really complicated, even from the standpoint of staff. And so we can understand how difficult it is, and we've been seeing some actions that, you know. We kind of wanna work as a group, right? Staff has our role, planning board has your role, zoning board has their role, and E C B has theirs. So the goal of this first presentation is to kind of bring all that together, show you guys just a brief overview of everything that we have at our disposal. What we're protecting, why we're protecting, and how we're protecting, and what can we do moving forward. Alright, um. I think I have met every single one of you. If I haven't, my name is Mike Murphy and the head code officer for the town of Canada Agua. I'm a certified floodplain manager through A S F P M. I'm also a national stormwater inspector certified through the National Stormwater Council. The only thing I don't have is pretty much the P E, so. Been doing codes for quite a few years and started with town of Canada Agua in June of twenty three, alright? Next slide.
Thank you. I already break it?
Oh, it's definitely broken. It's spinning.
That was so much for getting out of here.
Right, I know.
Well, so a certain town manager. He had a PowerPoint up last night and. And I was cold, set the minute, I just was hopped there, I was about to text him and say. Murph, Murph got his up, but no.
He sent it out to us, we all.
Yep, yeah, you can go to the next.
Say that's an important slide.
It is. I just got you my point, my slideshow. Alright, so first thing we're gonna do is kind of go through identifying our environmental resources. We're gonna talk big picture and we're gonna narrow that down. Uh looking at Canada Agua at a Huck ten level, you guys know what Huck ten is? So a Huck is a watershed map. It's a hydraulic map. Uh there's six different levels. Uh Huck ten ranges from anywhere from forty to two hundred and fifty thousand acres in size. Basically, it's a way that we can utilize to break everything down into smaller sections so that we can best manage it. Uh Canada Agua has actually gone well beyond uh Huck fourteen, which is the lowest. Highest, the lowest kind of amount of area uh where we have subwatersheds. To the point where our partners at the Canada Lake Watershed Council. We can tell you exactly pinpoint where everything is going, usually within less than acre. Alright, uh Kevin's done a lot with LiDAR and we've got a lot of good resources that have brought that to us. So looking at Canada Agua at Huck ten level, we have three main watersheds. That being Canada Lake, Canada River Lake. That being Canada Lake, Canada Lake Outlet and then the SBK WS Divide Hathaway Brook. I had to look that up because EPA used ask, excuse me, asked me about two weeks ago and I had no idea. That's the technical term for Mud Creek. Why we couldn't just say the Mud Creek watershed, I've got no idea. That's for the engineers to know. Looking at these, uh, Canada Lake is kind of our most recognized, right? It's grand total, the water body is about uh, ten and a half thousand acres, it's an AATS water body. You guys know what that means by any chance? So AA is the classification might BEC that is for uh, drinking water. It's best suited for drinking water, open recreation as well as fisheries. The TS just purely stands for trout spawning. It's been identified as a resource that is capable of trout spawn. Uh, provides more than seventy thousand people drinking water. As you guys know, with the Newark debacle we had on Sandy Beach. It goes quite a ways for drinking water. Uh, the watershed is about ten times the size, more than a hundred and seventy. Square miles in size, all right? Canada Lake Outlet, it's thirty four miles, it's class C stream and class C. It's an acronym, not an acronym, it's a designation by BEC signifies that it supports fisheries. Non-contact activities and it also supplies uh, drinking water sources, so it could supply Canada Lake. In this case, Canada outlet actually runs all the way out to the Erie Canal lock number twenty seven, then from there. It takes you all the way out east to the Seneca River, finally discharges on the Cayuga River and then eventually Lake Ontario. That watershed's roughly a hundred and eighty eight square miles in size. And I'm just gonna say Mud Creek, that is a thirty eight mile class C stream. Uh, runs through Bristol up towards the Village of Victor, then it hits another. Kind of stream, which again takes it to the canal lock twenty seven. All right. The outlet and Mud Creek actually used to be one, they were divided. Very long time ago.
The suckerbrook.
Suckerbrook is actually a part of the Canada Lake watershed. Uh, suckerbrook, if you guys are familiar, runsouth house park. South through the city, uh, and then eventually discharges just west of Casa, Casa Italiana. And that's where it ends.
There's green underneath that white square that's.
Chris, if you can point to that one blue line just below where it says Canada. Yep, that's actually suckerbrook right there. Next slide please. A good resource, I'll send all the words, is actually called River Runner. I had it tagged about in that slide. River Runner, if you click at your house, it'll tell you where the rainwater from your house goes all the way to Lake Ontario. It's really cool visualization. Uh, no, it's on my. Yeah, it's a GIS item.
River Runner?
Yep, River Runner. So again, narrowing our focus, right? We've looked at it wide scale. We're gonna kind of bring it more centralized. Uh, it's on Canada has more than a hundred and twenty one miles of map streams that's identified through our NRI, our national resource, natural resource inventory. Repairing corridors. You can kind of double that, right? So if you guys aren't familiar, riparian corridor is a buffer zone. It's about a hundred feet on each bank of the stream. So if we have reasonably saying a hundred and twenty one miles of stream, that means we've got about two hundred and forty two miles of riparian corridor that we should protect. Uh, riparian corridors are, in my opinion, some of the most beneficial to maintain. Not only do they provide infiltration, they provide pollution mitigation. They provide wildlife habitat and they're integral to aquatic life. They actually regulate the water temperature of that stream or that water body. Uh, ponds, we have roughly two hundred and twenty acres total of ponds throughout the town of Canada. I didn't even try to do the math on the wetlands. I put it through my AI system and it spit out at me, yeah, no, good try. It it wouldn't even run the file, I swear, so, but we know. That's a map of the north end of the town of Canada for the wetlands that has the informational BEC former and the national. As you guys can see. They're scattered all throughout. That giant blob, that's the lake. According to the Army Corps of Engineers, Canada Lake is a wetland. That's why we require JDs for all the flood. Next slide. The last big one we like to focus on, especially myself being a certified floodplain manager and a floodplain administrator, the floodplanes. We have roughly nine hundred and eighteen acres of floodplanes identified in the town of Canada. Now that includes our one percent and our point five percent areas. Of those, we have eight hundred and twenty three parcels identified in what we call the significant flood hazard area or the one percent. And in total, we have thirteen hundred and sixty four parcels within that five point five percent floodplain. You guys more commonly will hear those referred to as the hundred year and five hundred year. As a CFM, we hate that term because if I tell you you live in a hundred year floodplain, you're gonna tell me, well, twenty three flooded, so I'm good till. For another hundred years, right?
What, we get a hundred year flood every, how many years now?
Year.
Just about every year. Probably. You guys may be aware, right now the town BEC and FEMA are going through a map revision. That's where those numbers come from. Uh, we're hoping to have that map provision done. Twenty four months, uh, was the latest figure that I got from FEMA, so we're still working off the old maps, those are identified as flood areas. You guys remember the June twenty three flood? I do very well, that was my second week of work here. Yeah, thanks. I got a new job in a new municipality and handled a presidential disaster declaration on a. I think it was Murphy's Law. During that storm, uh, we actually, the town took. Basically the brunt of a lot of the damage, the infrastructure, the city took a lot of residential home damage, but. Everything flows downhill and we're uphill, so Jim's crews, they worked a lot and in total, it was estimated around three million dollars. And expenditures for uh, repair work. So there's definitely a cost associated with protecting our floodplains and reducing these base flood elevations. For Chris's question, a one percent flood or rain event in Canada was roughly three to four and a half inches within a twenty four hour period. Uh, we get that like daily sometimes, especially during, you know. April, May, we're getting that a lot, all right? What we're seeing now, especially what we're working with, with the watershed council and stormwater coalition. Is not so much these long duration events, it's a lot of these quick hitting high frequency. Severe intensity that they hit one small pocket. Yeah, and it's, it'll hit a small pocket and then the next day it's hitting ten miles down the road, but either way, we're just getting hit repeatedly. With these storms, um, which is a huge shift from how we used to think of it, right? Stormwater is designed for a hundred year, it's not great, you know, but now we're getting that nearly daily in a lot of our areas. So it's something we gotta look at. Excellent. So why must we protect and invest in these environmental protections? It's really, it comes back to reliance or resiliency, safety and economic growth. All right, that's kind of the big three to remember. Next slide. Of that, we've got different regulations, these are four. I could sit here and talk about the regulations that we're under all day, but big ones, Clean Water Act under EPA, that is. Kind of what gives the town the authority to be MS four, you guys familiar with what an MS four is? So MS four. And this is Mike Murphy talking, not town of Canada, but Mike Murphy, I'm gonna cover this up. Is basically BEC says that we have a population which makes us an urban area. We also have the capability to do a lot of what BEC does in other areas. That's where the whole SWIP concept, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan comes from. Because we're MS four, which stands for a municipal separate storm sewer system. It means that we have infrastructure within our town that can phase stormwater drainage from developments to a water butt. Then you throw in all those other criteria and basically it amounts to we do the DEC's job and we authorize it. Right? Title forty four, part sixty of the CFR federal regulations, that's where our NFIP and our floodplain requirements come from. I'm sure you guys have seen a lot of my comments about we need a floodplain permit, we need intersection termination, you need to show the floodplanes on the site plants. Number one thing that gets missed. That all comes from us being a part of the NFIP. Being a part of the National Flood Insurance Program gets our residents a decreased cost on their flood insurance. Which if you have a federally backed mortgage or ever have received. Or have ever received funds from the federal government. For property, you are required to carry and maintain flood insurance for that property if you are within a one percent flood risk area. We were recently. Kind of audited, it was a soft audit, as they say. Uh, in total, we have something like four hundred flood insurance policies in the town of Canada. And it's a significant cost savings for us going through all of these and regulating these areas as strictly as we do.
Flood insurance, just that way, is asterisk is so high, costs so much.
You get certain like ratings through FEMA, right, and then discounts on your. Policies based on whatever rating you achieve.
So we can, the town of Canada was not a part of that.
It's still expensive, no matter what he's doing, it's still.
Whatever it's referring to is called the uh, CSC, so I. Can't remember the acronym right now. Basically what it means is that we go above and beyond the standard requirements for FEMA. And because of that, you can get up to an eighty percent discount on a standard insurance policy. And the different levels get you increments of that percentage off. Town hasn't gone that step, we're going towards that. Biggest hurdle or really is flood maps, we don't want to change our flood. Uh, prevention code until those new flood maps come out because. It's gonna take a lot of work because I actually have to go before New York State Department of State so that we can be more restrictive than the New York State Uniform Code. So it's a lot of back and forth to try and become more strict. Uh, New York State Article seventeen, that's water pollution, that deals with DEC and ensuring safe drinking water, public use. And then the big one this year has been the wetland. I know you guys had someone come in, so I'm not gonna speak a whole lot on that. Just trust me when the applicants are saying we've waited ninety days to the JD, we're waiting more. For me to get the one for this property, took the whole hundred and fifteen days. And that was with a municipal email to a town, everything. So it really does take a long time. Next slide. Biggest, biggest, biggest reason why we have to go through and basically utilize tools in our toolbox. And invest in our environmental resource protection is our own plans and policies. Uh, comprehensive plan, I'm not gonna read through these, I promise you, but these are just. The scope and the purpose of these plans. This isn't an excerpt from a very far hidden away page, these are right within the first few pages. Each one of these, the cop plan, the NRI, the stormwater management plan and the site design criteria. All attribute their purpose in some manner or fashion to. Environmental resource protection, specifically hydro. So it's a real kind of item that not only should we, we have to. We have the regulations, we have the plans and the procedures and the policies in place, and this is something we need to work towards. Next slide. The last one is the resident impacts. Biggest one of this, we provide the drinking water to seventy thousand people, I hate to beat a dead horse, but Canada, I would, we're fortunate. That lake is number two on phosphorus levels out of all the finger lakes. And that's attributed to a lot of the work that the watershed council and the local municipalities have been doing. That's why we've seen a drastic increase in the habs when a lot of these other finger lakes have been seeing an increase year over year over year. This year.
We'll let that again, we said we're number two, meaning lowest?
Yes, yep, so we're number two lowest in concentration for pollution levels. That being, being one big phosphorus nitrogen, stuff like that, that are huge contributors to the habs and the harmful algae.
And and how is that? Changed over?
So we've stayed pretty steady. It's the other thing that's been increasing and that's a lot to do with the measures that we have in place. And a lot of the mitigation work that the council has been doing spearheaded by. To be real honest with the town of Canada. We have the most shoreline out of any other community, we have the most area out of any other community for the watershed. Jim Fletcher and our highway super, uh, highway guys spearhead a lot of it. I mean, they're sometimes out doing work in Naples. For stormwater projects.
A lot, all of the lakes have farms on their slopes and farms are something that causes a lot of the pollution. And Kevin, all they need with Jim and Jared and the whole town sport. Is going out, saying that farms going here and the waters coming here and dumping right here where we're getting harmful algae blooms. And he'll go find the landowner, he's got some vacant land in the middle of their big forty acre parcel, say, can I? Borrow your land and improve it with, and just let me take this stormwater and run it over here.
Just to go through a few of the projects, the the town has partnered with the watershed council. Uh, the Furrell property, it borders five and twenty on the bypass on the west side. I'm sure you guys saw our highway crews working out there for a good two weeks, uh, that was a. Kind of runoff control, uh, it's a pollutant catch, it's meant to stop a lot of those headwaters. From just a direct sheet full of discharge into suckerbrook area. It's since been burned, it has an outlet structure. That actually got hit two days after it was finished and it actually busted it out. But we still estimated that that saved homes. I mean, that was a huge help when we got that flooding. Water was very close to ending the homes, uh, some of them were right at the bottoms of the doorways, but thankfully none of them were actually. That bigger, you know, contribution was the work that the highway team did with the watershed council. Kind of going on flooding and erosion, uh, wetlands, those kind of are stormwater retention areas that are natural, right? We are fortunate, Canada Lake is not seeing an increase with the new floodplain maps, uh, flood elevation. It's actually staying the exact same, but we have seen a drastic increase in floodplain areas. Uh, just kind of a brief overview, that point five percent. We're only at like eight hundred parcels right now, we're going up nearly a thousand parcels within that floodplain area. A lot of that has to do with the development rate, a lot of those may have been there previously when we had our map revision in ninety seven and they just weren't. Taken advantage of and put on the maps, all right? Preservation of quality of life, we all know green spaces, clean air, all that over development, can lower property values to create the natural beauty. You guys have seen that time and time again, Pierce Brook, just discussed, right? Turned a farm field into a develop, right? And supporting the local economy, uh, tourism is a huge driver here, you travel for the tourism aspect is the way. Next slide.
Well, say it though, here's progress, there's still more to manage. Systems.
And we're actually looking to improve that, believe it or not, so. We'll go into it a little bit more, if you guys aren't aware, when a project does a SWIP. So our large over one acre sites that require post-construction stormwater management to be in place. They don't have to get any better than what is currently there. They only need to meet. A reduction in flow to meet the current undeveloped peak flow rate. So they're not helping the problem, but we already have problems, but they're also not making it any worse. What's making it worse are these higher frequency, higher intensity storm events that are really driving a lot of this flow. Excellent.
And just, just to clarify. Rate of runoff and volume of runoff are two different things. So there's still gonna be more volume of runoff, but it's only gonna leave the property at the same rate. So many cubic feet per second. As it did prior to develop. But you're gonna get more volume. In the lake.
So we're gonna go step by step through each tool that we have, these are gonna be our codes. Have you guys read our codes recently, since a lot of the revisions?
Technically I have, actually.
Gotcha.
Letter I had to write.
You did, I can do that. Uh, so recently Chris had to go through a certification for a stormwater and IDDE, we'll get to those. To show the state that. We're basically meeting the minimum requirements, correct? If not, that.
Yeah, I mean, it's exactly the minimum requirement, but that's not a bad.
So I would urge you guys, you know, we're gonna go through these really briefly, I'm not gonna go through everything, I don't expect you guys to be experts. If you guys want to come in, I got a whole team, Kristen's got a team, we're more than willing to go through each of these with you to really dive into them. Ordinance, we're kind of bogged down right now by form-based code, we got about thirty code revisions, we gotta get done in the next few months. And a lot of these are gonna be on there and I'll highlight some of those. Flood damage prevention, again, this is our. Flood damage prevention, again, this is our kind of code to be a participant in the flood insurance program. This limits the disturbance within the floodplains and ensures that your structures are actually built above the base flood elevation. We actually require it to be built built two feet above. So FEMA says your home is gonna flood at nine hundred feet. We make you build that first elevation, that first floor to at least nine hundred and two feet. That way, it's called freeboard. Should you get a higher intensity storm, we're giving you wiggle room. And that's actually a requirement statewide that we have. This also ensures that everything within the floodplain is documented. Number one thing that we actually issue violation wise is lack of floodplain building permits. A lot of people don't know, if you wanna paint the inside of your house, you need a permit if you're in a flood. The only thing you don't need a permit for is plugging something in. If you replace cabinets, carpets, floors, siding, windows, anything that doesn't require a building permit, still need a floodplain. Reason for that? If your house does get flood flooded and you seek a payment from your flood insurance policy, the first phone call they're gonna make is to be my office. They're gonna say, give me all the floodplain development permits you have for this property. That way you can get a fair evaluation on your property. Not just what it's assessed at, because that's only from an exterior standpoint. They're gonna look at everything in the interior. Next one is solarage control. Think of this as. I like to call it baby swips, right? This controls everything that's small. So oh, within the RLD. Anything greater than five hundred square feet of earth disturbance requires a permit. It requires solarage control, all of those. Outside of the RLD, it's twenty thousand, two thousand?
Ten thousand?
Ten thousand. So it's ten thousand square feet, again, requires a permit, doesn't matter what you're doing. This actually also includes clear cutting. That's another one that we issue a lot of stock work orders for. I know Mark's very familiar with that, Chuck's very familiar with that from a recent project. Uh, where they started before they got that permit. Clear cutting causes. Not as bad as earth disturbance, but it causes significant stormwater issues. All around. The old saying is, is a mature oak tree, I think it's what sixty gallons or something a year that it will go through and take out of the soil. Uh, new oak tree is like one. So every time that it kind of matures, it gets more and more increase in that rate that it's actually pulling and then through evaporative transpiration is released. So that's what we call our baby swips. Next slide. Stormwater management, this is directly with our MS four program. Within the MS four program, there are six minimum control measures. That's public information. As one, two is public outreach and involvement, three is our construction site or excuse me. Our illicit discharge illumination and outfall monitoring. Four is our construction site management. Five is post-construction, that's our stormwater maintenance facilities, our ponds. And six is our good housekeeping, that's all we do. This deals directly with four and five. This is where. Our SWIP control comes from, this is where us going out weekly and doing SWIP inspections. A lot of you guys might not know, the town took a huge leap this year and actually hired a full-time stormwater inspector to be added to my staff. It has been instrumental in all of our sites. Not to pat myself on the back, EPA just came through and audited our stormwater program. They gave us such high remarks on our construction site monitoring. That they're gonna start recommending some of the practices that we do to other municipalities. We inspect most sites once a week. All sites that are active. At least every other. And we rank them, how close are they to water bodies, how large are they, what are they doing? So that's kind of our schedule for that. All of those powers. And our ability to review and authorize swaps comes from chapter one seven. Chapter one seventy-two, that deals with OCM three. This has to deal with the illicit discharges. You guys know what an illicit discharge is?
Something we did in college.
So.
They're younger than us more.
Oh my. So back on track hopefully, an illicit discharge is. Um, a unpermitted or unauthorized discharge through our stormwater system. That is everything with the exception of very few items. Those items being. Natural stormwater drainage, man-made drainage features. And firefighting operations. Just about everything else is considered an illicit discharge. Dumping paint, if you store chemicals in your basement, your basement floods and that basement is tied into the source to our storm sewer system. That's an illicit discharge. Part of that is we have outfalls. An outfall is wherever our stormwater systems, whether it be a roadside ditch, a culver. Uh, catch basin system, wherever that discharge is to a water body. That's an outfall and we actually have to inspect those. We inspect ours twice a year. The minimum requirement is once every five years. We do it twice a year because we see a trend. We see more illicit discharges. Last year we had ten recorded in the town. We were only able to track down three and actually stop those. So our goal is to hopefully reduce the number that we find and. Even better, would be to track down every single one. And by track down, this code allows us to go through, trace that pipe, find exactly where that source is coming from. Using different measures like dye testing and actually. Say it again?
Are you doing any kind of?
We're not.
Well, just have to catch a visual.
Yeah, so when we do the inspections, actually it has to be done in dry weather. That's a big misnomer. Um, reason being. If we went out during wet weather, we're gonna have a million because oil leaks from cars that eventually gets into the water stream out. We're really looking for those more harmful, the paints, the dyes, the stains.
Found a harmful discharge, not on an inspection last year, no big lots.
Yeah, uh, just last year we had a sewer discharge into the Canadian Lake outlet from the Big Lots Plaza. Uh, it was an unmonitored pump station that malfunctioned. It was roughly five hundred. To a thousand gallons of raw sewage. That entered the outlet. Uh, we really don't know how much. We don't know how long it was leaking. That was just a random, we're driving through the parking lot. What is that smell? Um, caught our eye. We've also had sediment discharges from possible construction sites. Uh. We just had one on Canada Lake. We actually flew drone. We had a s- what we'll call a single source. Uh, abrupt event is kind of how we classify it. There was a sewage spill. We couldn't identify from where. It was on the west side of the lake. We traced it the entire pathway. And we couldn't find it.
This is sewage spill from a septic tank, you mean? But most likely.
It could be. The other thing is, is a lot of the properties on Westlake Road are below the elevation of the sewer main. So a lot of them have grinder pumps. We do see a lot of those malfunction. And because of the drainage features that were once permitted in the town like direct drainage to the lake. If that malfunctions in kind of your mechanical room area where your salt pump is, we have seen those picking up and running out. Um. We weren't truly able to identify where it came from. So we notified all the municipalities, said, hey, check your areas, is it somewhere? Um, and then we were constantly monitoring. We're doing twice a day as well as constant with the beach areas and thankfully we never saw it again. So those are just a few that we see, um. But. Chapter one seventy-two gives us that power and that ability to write those up. And ultimately, it also gives us the legal powers to enforce that. Next slide. Subdivision or I'm on the wrong one, sorry, stormwater. Oh, we're good. Alright, subdivision land. Subdivision land has to do exactly with your board, alright? Um. This includes requirements for our stormo- storm and surface drainage. It actually has a note in there. It requires preservation of NRI features unless absolutely necessary to be disturbed for that develop. So what does that mean? Well, that's up to this board and your interpretation. And council with the attorney to say. Is that really needed a clear cut? Different items like that. Uh, that's where the existing vegetation is required to be preserved. It also allows you to have discretion more stringent stormwater management. Uh, so if you see a lot that you think is going to be a problem. You can put in more stringent stormwater management.
Are there things that you're looking for from us there?
Oh yeah, we'll get there. I got it, Mark. Um, you'll see a project coming up. I've been working with the watershed council, been working with the uh, soil and water. Where we're actually suggesting and commenting that this board requires a second stormwater management facility. Because we have seen significant stormwater impacts on this road that's on the west side of the lake and. Underneath DEC, they only need to meet the requirement that they match what is currently there. That's not good. We wanna bring it down. We know there's an issue. So that's where one of those is gonna be instituted.
The code enforcement has been requested for it.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be a joint comment from myself, the watershed council, as well as Tyler Old from Ontario Soil and Water. Check two zero two is our wastewater treatment systems. We have more stringent, this is lakewide, so all the municipalities border lake. We've got more stringent requirements for our septic systems than DOH, okay? Um, for instance, DOH requires a one-bedroom calculation. Basically, we require a one and a half bedrooms to what DEC records or DOH exceeds. We also have periodic inspection requirements. If you live within two hundred feet or your septic system is within two hundred feet of the lake, you're required to have that inspected annually. We also require that every property you transfer, you have a septic system inspection conducted. It also gives us power for failing systems or substandard to have those improved. Failing, that's kind of always been in there with DOH where we exceed is that substandard. If we get an inspection report back that says, hey, this isn't really functioning that well, but it's not yet failing. We can still go through the process to have that system upgraded.
So you require those inspections?
Correct.
The enforcement on them is what?
Enforcement as in.
How do you know they're doing it?
So we actually partner with Soil and Water. So Tyler will, he is the watershed. Basically, septic inspector. Um, he keeps a running tally of every single one.
Make sure that he gets one every year.
Yep, he has a copy of my signature. He actually sends out the letters end of the year. Hopefully in the next month I'll get his letter saying here the property's been, then we file notices violation, go through the violation process. Next slide. And the big one, zoning, alright? Subdivision land has to do with you guys a lot. I really would recommend reading through that. It it has a lot of open-ended interpretative items in there that. If we make a comment, we'll allow you to. Zoning is very strict. Lot coverage is this, building coverage is this. We see a lot of times. People go the variance route. Our goal is, hey, you may need a variance, but what can you provide to offset that variance? Um, recently there was an application, I got a call from property owner, he's like, you recommended denial of my application. Or my variance application. I said, yeah, I do that for every lot coverage request, every building coverage request and every stream setback. And the floodplain administrator, that's my position, my office's position on those is the environmental impacts far outweigh your personal gains. Your project may not be, you know, the piece of straw that broke camel's back. But if we get enough of these, eventually the camel's back is gonna break. And we're gonna start seeing that. We already do see that with the amount of runoff that we have. So we told the property owner, said, hey, I'm still gonna issue a recommendation to deny unless you're able to offset this. As a result, they put in permeable pavers over a large section of driveway. That otherwise would have been just straight asphalt with no runoff control. So this way, hey, they're getting the variance, we recommended, okay. They're making a step. They're trying to help the situation. So and it actually reduced it to from a ten percent request to if, yeah. So I dropped it about nine percent because of the permeable pavers. Okay.
Is it worth having a list of? Compromises?
No.
No.
No, because then.
Yeah.
It's a site specific space. Sometimes somebody will say, oh, I'll put in all permeable pavers, but the answer is still.
Yeah.
We're not, this isn't the.
A good example for that is a lot of times you guys will approve a project on say Sandy Beach or Poplar Beach with a dry well. That's probably the number one change order that I do because. You can't do a dry well out there. It's it's not, the water table is too high. Uh, if you go down about two feet, you're hitting lake level. So a lot of times I say, hey, swap it out for an infiltration trench to the same quantity sizing requirements and they're able to run that. Um.
Thank you.
Yep. So it's it's a likely, it's a swamp, right? We're still meeting the same. For the deep well, alright?
Oh, so how to, so if we see that. If we're not willing to suggest compromise and we have a list of things that are disposable, do we just? Make it a condition that they have to solve? What's the right way to handle that? It doesn't tie our hands in some way?
Well, it's not your, it's zoning. I mean, if somebody wants increased lot cover, more lot coverage than is allowed by zoning. Mike takes a look at it and says, well, I'm against it, but I might. I might recommend approval if you if you put in a lot of permeable favors.
It still gets to us.
And then this, it then if the zoning board approves it, then it will get. At which point. Yeah.
So you're saying if if we see a recommendation, we just deny the problem? That's what pisses out from your game.
No.
zoning board of appeals has been, still gets stuff through. That we've looked at for these reasons and said, we don't think it's appropriate. So then we have to go towards a direction, we get stormwater, we can typically get them for stormwater. Or we get them for a safety concern. Cause that's what we can control.
Yep.
But they still come through to us.
And the sys- the way the system is set up. Uh, now, alright, now. You can, there's public comments that you could make to the zoning board. I think they'd be appreciative of it. Either on specific application, no, I'm not, that's not joking, it was or uh, in general. Um, I don't think that would be uh, out of line at all.
Are you presenting this to the zoning board?
I have made the offer to all three boards.
This is more of.
If you do the zoning board, let me know, I'll want to attend.
No, it's outside of that, it's really relevant to the zone.
This is an overview of everything that we have in. A goal that you guys will come back to me and say, hey, we really wanna focus on this, similar to Mark's idea for more. Training, specific training. And from a staff perspective, we can give you some of that. You know, we have the expertise within our staff to allow a lot of this, um, and we're more than willing to share that. So that's really, this is a brief overview of everything.
I mean, in a case where you'd say you'd be permeable favors. Is is it a condition of their permit that? If they go pave that at some point in time during violation and get teared out?
I am going through a violation of that right now. Um, in conjunction with planning and zoning. Now, what we're doing to persuade that not to happen. Is I am requiring, we've recently have done this with the project, that the details for the product, the maintenance procedures for that product be included on the site plan. As well as going as far as working with MRB and Chris to have a stormwater maintenance agreement, similar to what we'd have for a stormwater management facility. Not that you have to send us inspections, but that if it does fail. And we identify it. It's on your site plan and not only do I have the avenue to say you've now altered the approved site plan, but now I have an agreement that says you're gonna maintain this as prescribed.
So actually, but that's, it's a good question. When, when you are faced with those, when the zoning board's granted a variance based essentially based on. Permeable pavers. Let's make sure we include it as a condition of approval. What might just some or, you know, agreement to maintain.
Detail.
Maintenance. And that there be permeable pavers forever because. You're a clever town attorney, you're like a decade ago, but. That a violation of a planning board condition of approval is a violation of town code. Which quite frankly is the easiest code, that's the easiest thing for them to enforce.
Yeah.
And you have resources to. Chief chase all this stuff.
We're getting there, we're getting there. To be honest with you, the town board's made a huge step, right? We started before I was here with two, then I started, we went down to one. I was by myself for the better part of a year. I now have a full staff of five. Uh, one being part-time, four including myself being full-time. So part of that is because our development rates have increased. I've issued more new home permits in six months of this year than in the last two years combined. So it's it's increased and I know you guys have seen it with ten o'clock meetings, right? Um. So we're busy.
We're beginning to promise to.
I listen, I.
We're not going to tell.
Yeah, no, Steve's salt protections, that one still does not, I don't understand that. I read through that every time I go through it. Thankfully, that has a lot to do with planning and zoning. Alright, well, there are a lot of things in there, such as requirements. Thankfully, that has a lot to do with planning and zoning, alright, but there are a lot of things in there, such as requiring those or increased stormwater management in that area. Watercourse setbacks, went through those already, those are huge and personal to me, because that's the easiest thing. Um, I just found today a memo from the engineering team for the town of Skinny Atlas. Where they went through an institute of zoning, where nothing over six hundred square feet in size. For a principal structure can be within a hundred and fifty feet, nothing more than. Hundred square feet for an accessory structure can be within sixty of that water course. The gold standard is a hundred, you know, that's kind of bare bones for a principal structure, fifty for an accessory. There's meanings because it allows that infiltration, allows that aquatic habitat to thrive, a lot of that's in there. So every time we reduce those, we have some negative impacts along the way. Uh, prime example, a lot of those streams flood, and they come over top of the banks. Um, we recently issued on safe building on a home for that, the exact reason it flooded out, nothing we did. You know, when you get five feet of water in your basement, that's kind of the end of the situation, you gotta got it. Uh, preservation of natural features, there is a code within zoning, requires that for maintaining existing trees, brooks and drainage. And special use permits I threw in there because those are purely to the board's agenda. Special use permits, they're not things that we regularly will allow. So that's where again, you get a lot of those powers to be a little bit more stringent with what they're doing, saying, hey, we wanna have this, we wanna have that. Next slide. And I know I've talked a lot about a few of these, but our technical partners, we have the Canadian watershed council, they. Actually, this week I've talked to them for at least an hour every single day. They also stole Sarah from us, so there's a little bit of a personal grudge going on right now, alright. Um, but the watershed council, Kevin, I'll be, Sarah, I can, they are amazing, not only do they help us with grant searching, grant writing, grant management. They also do a lot of these stormwater projects and kind of spearheading these and finding these properties, working with the property owners for easements. They also do all of our uniform docking and moring. I know you guys as board don't really work with that a whole lot, but docking and moring. That's a lot of what I do, um. You go through a lot, quite a few docks in the area. This week alone, I just got ten permits from one dock builder. I think he has a grudge against me, alright? Um, but that's a lot of what the watershed does. M R B, they provide our technical review, regulatory aspects. Sound engineering practices. If you guys have a question about engineering, refer it off. Say, hey, M R B, Eric, can you guys look at this? Can you double check their stormwater calculations? Can you make sure that this is a good measure? What's your opinion? They're the ones that really should be answering those. My office is great at what we do, but when you start getting into the designing and calculations and ensuring those are correct. I have to refer those off. That's well above our criteria for what we can do.
Well, and so. The designing and calculations, this is why I suggested. Is your decision, it's not actually M R B's decision, it's not actually code enforcement's decision, it's the planning board's decision.
With the help.
Obviously, we've rarely had, I mean. Chuck, until you showed up Tim, we don't have a ton of engineers other than Chuck, who's not doing the stormwater calculations. You have an applicant's engineer, double checked by code enforcement and uh, M R B. But it's still your decision, that's why I said, no, Mike, that's a great way to rush things through, but. I'd rather, even if it's, even if you never see those calculations. And Mike looks at him and says, it would be you to be saying, okay, we improve them on stormwater stuff. But you're, uh, you know. Not, not fulfilling your duties and that's not.
Why I'm the last one to sign the plans?
Yep, well, exactly. Um. And theoretically, we could have delegated Chuck to make the decision based on recommendation, but it makes sense. Better sense.
Ontario County Soil and Water, um. This is who like tonight, gentleman was talking about Tyler, Tyler Old, he is the watershed inspector for the Canada watershed. He works for Ontario County Soil and Water, and that is partly funded by the municipalities that all order the lake. Or are within the water. Um, he reviews every septic system within the watershed, he does the inspections of the watershed systems. He also goes through, and they actually have a team that works outside of the watershed. They do the. Uh, vast majority of the systems of the town. So they'll go through, they do the inspections, they also keep a running tally and database of all septic systems in Ontario County. So if you yourself have a septic system and you have a question, chances are they have your design drawings, they have all of your recent inspections. By recent, I mean twenty years, because their data goes back quite a while further. Uh, they also are probably the number one partner that we utilize for agriculture. As you guys know, agriculture underneath soil erosion, it's a weird area. The new general construction permit issued by D E C made it even weirder. They are required to meet some conditions of the permit, not all. They have to tell us if they're doing things in some areas, not all, it gets very weird word. Soil and Water partners with a lot of the farmers within the area. They help us regulate a lot of that, but they also provide a lot of funding opportunities and project opportunities for these farmers. Um, whether it's, you know, covered uh, manure pit storage. Whether it's stormwater management on a farm site, soil stabilization, a lot of that's funded through soil and water, through state grants. Ontario Wayne Stormwater Coalition, this is a new one for us, we joined this this year. This is a group of nine municipalities, um, between Ontario and Wayne counties, that are all MS fours. Basically, it's technical expertise for us. Um, we meet every other month, review stormwater projects, permit requirements, go through grant funding. And really just try to be better, um, all of our flyers that you'll see throughout the building, that giant sign, that's all. Because we're a part of that coalition, you know, we pay into it, we assist the coalition. Uh, the stormwater training that I sent out to your guys' group, that is sponsored by the coalition, they actually reimburse us. For our training that we send people to, from the coalition. So it's a great partnership with the municipalities. Figure like Toronto Trust, um, not only are they a huge opponent within the watershed, they also actually monitor a few of our conservation easements within the town. We appreciate it because we get a letter saying, these are the properties that are in violation, please fix it. And then we go out and we resolve those issues. Basically, we enforce the conservation easement, they monitor it, is the best way to describe it. And again, our property owners, their permit, um. Smart development decisions, getting permits for stuff, proper approvals, conservation easements. The number of stormwater complaints I got last year was astronomical. I tried to pull the data, uh, it was well above eighty. That we're just dealing with, I have basement flooding, I have stormwater under my property from this property. I may hate it, but at the same time, it allows me to gather data that we can use for projects.
Is that nine element plan? Give an idea like where the land use types, the bushes normally come from, finally, like the percent breakdown, I know it's.
Yeah, it breaks it down between the agricultural, the single use property, commercial. There's another category, I think it might be clustered subdivision or. I don't, now it's on my head. It's sitting on my desk in my office, it's part of the coffee nook. Reading material, um, but that's a really great document to go through. That is why we have the phosphorus notes on all of our plans. Um, that's why my office is kind of looking towards not just requiring regular D E C stormwater design. But requiring phosphorus stormwater design, which is stormwater designed to remove phosphorus from that stormwater system. Alright, uh, better control it, better break it down. Phosphorus is probably the number one pollutant that we see within the water body. Um, we push heavily for triple zero fertilizer, it's an all natural fertilizer. You may have seen the make a splash campaign at the Canada appointments, the town was a part of that because of the stormwater council and the stormwater association for the. Watershed Association, um, you know, it's. A really big issue because we don't have phosphorus issues in this area, the excellent, but have a large amount of phosphorus naturally. So it's one of those where unless you have testing, you shouldn't be putting it down. Alright, it's also the biggest contributor to the haps. Next slide. Now we're gonna go through each role, you know, the next slide. And really hone in. Staff's role, planning and zoning, Kristen's team, they have tech select, technical expertise, wow, in sustainable planning, um. They're able to really offer these ideas to the applicants before you even see the project. Hey, instead of clear cutting this area, how about you go through a manicure? Instead of using regular old asphalt, how much you utilize permeable pavers and bring some of that down, bring that infiltration back in. Uh, recently we just had a project, they put a stormwater system in, but. It didn't take anything from the driveway, it just took everything from the house, and we're like, you're not. Yes, you're meeting the intent of the local law, but you're not helping the situation. So that's where a lot of that comes in. They also do a lot of the long term planning, as you guys know, being the planning office. They oversee the comp plan, they oversee the N R I, getting those updated. When you guys as the boards bring it to their intention to say, hey, let's take a look at this, they really do take that time and they dive into it. My team's role, we have the expertise of floodplain management, stormwater regulations, legal processing, and on site wastewater. I put legal processing in there, and Chris is gonna laugh, but that's because we go through those enforcement procedures. When you guys as the board come to my office and say, hey, this wasn't done to the site plan, we do look into it. It, it happens quite often, we're, hey, we're gonna go through this process. You may not like that it takes three months, but that's the process that we have to go through.
No, no laughing, that I agree wholeheartedly, I think you guys do a lot of legal work and it's, it's appreciated and do well.
I was saying legal processing, you know. That's like a real thirty levels type stuff, uh, and on site wastewater, three of my staff are actually certified septic inspectors in Seneca, Kewa. And Anadaga County, Ontario County, we don't have a septic inspection program. You just need to be anyone, to be brutally honest with you, it's called OTN, but OTN has since died, it's become defunct. Uh, so I just send my guys out to Seneca County to get that. Uh, we also educate a lot of people, you know, as I said, M C M one and two of our MS fours, that public outreach, that public information. My guys do a lot of classroom events, a lot of, we're out at the farmers markets, we're all over. Ontario Wayne County because of the coalition doing a lot of these events, do that face to face. It's also because we're out in the public, we're the ones that drive around the marked vehicles and the marked polo shirts, that say town of Canada, if someone has a problem. Point, they're just walking up to our trucks saying, hey, you fixed this, um. A lot of that is information, uh, we all carry stormwater law, it's a really great. Kind of summary of all near state stormwater case law that was written by Cornell. Uh, I'd wanna say about four or five years ago, but it still is very relevant, and we utilize that a whole lot, especially with. This house was built ten years ago and we have this problem. Okay, well, how about you read through this, let me know what you think. Come back to us and we'll talk to you about different ways that you can talk to your neighbor, that you can work with stuff on your property. But it's a good avenue, you know, it really explains a lot of the law, the legal aspects. We also ensure the compliance, we're the ones that are out there, making sure the site plans are being followed, um, we look over the asphalt. Kind of a change since I took over, we no longer send asphalt to M R B unless it has to deal with large stormwater post-construction. Or large development. A lot of these single family, we take in-house, we just have the technical. Uh, tools to really kind of hone in and see what needs to be there. We've got a program, I take the signed copy with Chuck's signature, I take the asphalt, it overlays it, and then A I. Does a whole thing and it tells me exactly what's wrong. So that's one of those tools in our toolbox. And then like I said, we conduct data collection, um. We're out after every single rain event, my staff after a one inch rain event within four hours. We go out the next day, we inspect every single construction site, whether it's a slip, whether it's John Doe building deck. We go out and we walk every single one, because that's when the problems occur, are those rain events. And we wanna make sure that if there is an issue, they're immediate. We're collecting the data, hey, this is where the rain actually hit, uh, thankfully with the new budget, if it goes through. We did budget for rain data collectors that are cellular, they can be placed in different spots throughout town. Uh, hopeful to get those up by the end of Q one of twenty five or twenty six, excuse me. That way we can really get some true scientific data that right now we're not able to get. Next slide. Here guys is area, alright, so you guys are, you guys review the development proposals, ensure compliance and everything. You are kind of the last man standing, right? Excuse me, they've gone through Kristen's office, they've gone through that process, they've gone through the referral process, the comments have come back. You're the last step to institute more stringent measures, to ask for changes, to say, hey, this doesn't look right. So that's kind of the big thing to take away. You're also charged with implementing a company. Comp plan has a lot of goals for stormwater and environmental resource management that we gotta review, we gotta go through. It's nothing against anyone, any of the boards, it's just. We notated it during the last town board agenda review meeting, where we need to sit down with each board and say, okay, what have we really done? What are the areas that we can improve on? Um. You know, we're so busy, it gets put in the back. I'd say, we follow it, but meeting those goals. And coordinating secret, uh, secret is a huge part of this, you know, you guys are signing off that the environmental impacts are negative. So making sure that that's actually done, followed through with, reviewed. Uh, coordinating the input of the advisor committees, all the other boards, technical advisors, so I know the famous condition. Satisfactory to town code enforcement officer, met all those comments, that's really important, I appreciate that. Because we spend a lot of time reviewing these upwards of an hour and a half for each project, every once in a while I miss one, as we saw tonight. But we review them all, we provide uh, marked up plans, have you guys seen our marked up plans? Go through the cloud permit, a lot of times I put them as town code enforcement officer comments and review. And it is straight their site plan, a lot of red drawings on it, and that gets sent right off to them to have. So we spend a lot of time. You also conduct public meetings, public hearings, just like you did tonight, period residents concerned, hey, I gotta issue a stormwater. Okay, hey, let's fix it, we can solve that, you know, now's the time to do it, because in ten years, there's nothing I can do. Unfortunately, our hands are tied. Next one. Zoning board, they review the variance requests, they evaluate whether the proposed exceptions could negatively impact natural resources. The biggest one that I'm gonna kind of push towards Z B A is, hey, we can condition some of these. You can say, hey, if you want the increased lot coverage, what can you give us in return for that trade off, right? It's not anything bad, maybe they can't go through an improvement somewhere, but have that discussion, talk about stream setbacks. Can you really build on the line? Uh, items like that. Ultimately, what it comes down to is, we can't ever get better if people are relying on her. Alright, um, and kind of going through what those impacts will be, right? A lot of the technical advisors don't, the applications for Z B A don't get referred to them, we're gonna start working on that with P R C. So that we can get a lot of those technical comments in of those impacts. Whether it's the U C B, my office, the watershed council, soil and water, M R B to say.
I think M R B would be a very good technical advisor for zoning board applications. M R B almost never gets there because sort of waiting to see if they get the variance, I think M R B would be a great. Advisor and should be almost all of the uh, applications.
So I next.
Spend your time, that's a charitable.
You mean I actually get to go out in the field?
And go do your job.
To be honest with you, I haven't done a field inspection in about three weeks, so, yeah, a lot of what I do is sitting in the office. Um, but it's really huge to have those, that input, the technical advisors, you know. By trade, you guys in the Z B A and the U C B may not be that person that's knowledgeable in that subject matter. If we are, we'll find that person, and we'll get the information from them. We're involved in networking all over the state, we'll find it. Next slide, please. E C B, promote environmental stewardship, public awareness is huge, I'm sure you guys have seen Kim's newsletters. I call them Kim's newsletters because the amount of work Kim puts into, alright. She'll probably email me three times before the deadline just to make sure I don't have anything, I've only ever put one or. I appreciate it still, alright, um, they also are huge in the environmental review and the impacts. I know you guys have seen their comments, you guys are great with acknowledging those and implementing a lot of those. Where I wanna kind of guide the E C B more is to review the comp, kind of do a peer review. I do it in my office with building plans and site plans, say, hey, E C B, how's the planning board meeting their goals of. Environmental resource management with the comprehensive plan, with the N R I. Planning board does it with E C B, vice versa, everyone takes a turn. Vice versa, everyone takes a turn. That way, hey, it's not judgment, we're just working as a team and how can we best manage all this? Next slide. And next slide, sorry, title slide. Alright, to Mark's point from earlier, what more can we do? This is really where a lot of discussion in the future is going to come from. We're going through a massive code revision with form-based code. One of the major codes that I have is chapter one seventy. Um, chapter one seventy, it's the standard boilerplate code on stormwater management from D U C. We're not any better, we could be better. So I really am hoping that this becomes a springboard for a lot of the changes that we can implement. After we get through form-based code with the ordinance committee, as well as just procedure within town staff, how can we better assist every board? Uh, buildings. Larger stormwater management, we talked about that, how they're only required to be pre-development rates, we can require more. New York State has a wonderful thing called the home rule. We can go through and ask for more. If it's not feasible, they're engineers, they can tell us why it's not. But we can still ask for it. A site like Sunset Ridge where. Lake water is at the bottom, they they can't go any deeper. Well, hey, can you go larger? You might have sacrificed a building lot, but that's a discussion that can be had between the boards, committees, technical advisors. Less reliance on the variance, how can we persuade applicants? Not so much, hey, let's stop issuing them. I don't even want them to get there. So what can we do on our end? My favorite thing is if I say that you can have. Two cookies a day, you're gonna ask to have three, right? If I say you can have one cookie, you're gonna ask for two. So does that mean that we just reduce our lot coverage allowance so that they're not asking for so much? It's a greater one? That's a question to be had. Discussion to be had. And what conditions can we institute? What things go through and ask, right? Require more small-scale site mitigation. This one is near and near to the heart of Kevin O'Leary. This is what we've been talking about, hours a day. When I say hours, it is hours. I have Sarah in the background yelling at Kevin to let me get off the phone. Um. But. For those smaller sites that aren't the twenty thousand square feet, that aren't the R L D sites. Can we require some more mitigation across all development? If you're putting in a house, you need to offset that. Let's be better. You know, let's be more beneficial. Um, that would take some requirements for code, but it's something that we're willing to go through and do. We already require it in one area, to be really honest with you, it's gonna help staff to require it townwide. As opposed to just the small section.
Could we do it as a condition? Yeah.
You could.
Sure can.
I still.
That's where the exercise with discretion, that's why it's the planning board's decision. You take technical recommendations and, you know, Mike, I mean, I don't know if it's a good idea to do on every single.
No, well.
Trailer because.
A lot of our work is on the lake, people are tearing down houses and building new houses or modifying.
You can, first of all, you can. Do it on your, I want to see more mitigating. You can say, I would like to see some, I would like to see M R B review this and get back to us next month. Or I'd like to see Mike Murphy review this and get back to us next month on if this is enough or what we should do. Um, or I'd like to see there the applicant's engineer write something up about it. You have that authority to. Get to demand the information you need and the advice that you want.
You know. The lake is our resource and if we have a significant portion of what comes before us. It is not going to meet the criteria to require D E C's requirements or stormwater mitigation. We should have our own.
Yeah, there's enough in the code that will let you do.
Yeah.
Will let you do it. Where appropriate, because having it on our own. On every single family residential lot in the town might not be a great idea.
Might not be a great idea, that's why I say, rather than, if it's generally talked about in the code and we can make conditions.
That's yeah, it's in there.
Procedure.
That stuff's in there now, you guys have that.
Yeah, and like one of the things that a lot of the municipalities are doing, we're kind of looking towards Webster to model our code. Is anything more than twenty-five thousand square feet.
No.
A disturbance, I love it. There's stormwater code.
Oh.
Yeah, there's stormwater code, come on.
Yeah.
Right.
I've always liked, I found it very interesting.
Um, but they require stormwater management plans for anything more than twenty-five thousand square feet to meet D E C's requirements. They're not required to get a speedy permit coverage, but they're required to still do the same process. So they're taking a lot of that in. If the site is disturbed more than two thousand square feet, they need to put some mitigation in. No matter what it is, it could be, hey, we're gonna sheet flow from a common discharge, that's still mitigation, you're still providing. But it still requires some aspect and then that engineer that's applying for it, designing the system. Needs to write a statement saying, this is how I'm meeting this, this is what I'm meeting or this is what I'm basically achieving. And these are. The benefits of the system. So it's a great process. Um. I'll kind of jump ahead to providing more funding because that's based off Webster, skinny Alice, there's a lot of areas that are doing this. We have the Parks and Rec Fund. A lot of areas that are acquiring these smaller scale stormwater man mitigation sites. If you can't feasibly meet it and you back that from an engineer, they're going through and they're saying, okay, you're gonna. Basically have a stormwater management fee, which then goes and is allocated to a townwide project.
Watch how that's written. Can't be an assessment, right?
No, it would be exactly the same as the park and rep fee. Now, the park and rep fee, there's. Section upon section in state law about that. It's not actually a park and rep fee, it's a, the planning board has authority to demand that a subdivision include a park on its plan. If you're subdividing five hundred acres into, you know, five hundred lots, give the town twenty acres and make it a town park. Unless the planning board makes specific findings, which Eric writes for you every time. It says, well, we don't need a park and we've already got a park in this area, but we still need money for the park, so. So you do the same thing. We we would love for you to put some stormwater management facilities on your own lot. Um. But you don't have enough room.
If we're gonna build a regional or.
Therefore, or regional, thousand plus building, probably.
Which, we have no shortage of projects. It's just about every other week, we're getting a new request for a new stormwater project. Uh, this week we were breaking ground in Happiness House, that would be just under five acres. Very large stormwater management facility that'll be brand new, we're not retrofitting, we're creating one in partnership with FEMA. D E C, D O S, insert a million other alphabet agencies. Um, as a direct result of the June twenty-three flooding, to reduce a lot of that.
Alright.
So that's a big one. Uh, we've got another one in the works, uh, down Middle Cheshire area, Wells Curtis. We just did one there, now we want to do one on the other side of the road.
Yeah.
I don't get why, but they come up with the projects, we just help. More stringent codes, um, one second. Can we better define the mitigation pro practices? I know that was discussed the last planning board meeting and how do we define those? Um, I would at least like to see when you guys refer something to me for, hey, can you look at this for stormwater? Instead of saying stormwater management or infiltration, what's your end goal? Is it a reduction in stormwater or is it a reduction in pollutants? There's two different means and methods of thinking with that. Um, that really would drive what? I need to look at what Eric's team and M R B needs to look at because different practices have different goals. A rain garden is for pollutant, really not for quantity reduction. Dry well. It's mainly for pollutant, but it also has the added benefit of that quantity infiltration trench pollutant. You're not gonna get a whole lot of quantity measures within stormwater on these small scale sites. Next slide. Next slide. So just quick conclusion slide, kind of going over, we use municipal code, our technical experts, I really want to drive home the team aspect. You know, it's in our comp plan, it's in our honor, it's in all these plans. Those are adopted by the town board, they're sent down to different boards, different committees, staff to really help and to enhance. Um. Our land use regulations, what can we do? Give us ideas. Ordinance committee meets once a month. Uh, was it second Monday or first Monday of every month?
First Monday.
First Monday. Um, we overlook, you have an idea, bring it forward. Staff, town attorney, engineers will look at it, we'll resign it to committee, eventually get it up to the town board for adoption. Again, we're a mission, it's team mission and future planning. Let me know whatever trainings you want. I'm not gonna be the guy to teach all your trainings, but I'll find someone for you guys. I'll bring them in. With the coalition, with the council, we have these technical experts. When I mentioned this to Kevin O'Leary. Kevin was like, I could talk for three hours about all the projects I've been doing. I'm like, yeah, no, that's not the goal, right? I was like, how much you reported, we'll throw it up there at ten times speed and we'll get through it, alright?
Yeah.
Uh, we'll sign off, you guys did three hours worth of work. So that's kind of just one of those, but we can offer those. Uh, if you guys want full day trainings, whatever you guys want, just let staff know and we'll work towards it. If you guys want synopsis of codes, you know, instead of reading verbatim hundreds of pages of code, let us know. Hey, I want to know about this. We'll find all the citations, the references and we'll send it over. That way you guys have the tools and toolbox to do your jobs. Alright, any questions?
There's your speaker for next spring. There you go.
No, I already got, yeah, I'm on the Yates Ontario Building Officials Education Committee. I just got FEMA to teach a floodplain training in Ontario County in December. I'm on the stormwaters education committee, I got enough.
Yeah, but Kim does a newsletter and she's nasty to do.
Well, yeah, then. Give her this presentation.
There you go. So like I said, just my office door is always open. I know you guys have my email, my phone numbers, just give me a call.
Appreciate it.
Are we any, yeah, thank you. Are we any closer to a stormwater master plan?
I don't know.
You got your outfalls.
I mean, it it's a, it's a.
So I don't.
It's an expensive.
That was before.
Well. I was talking, it was a couple of years and, you know. And back to my old drainage committee days and.
Yeah, I mean, so we have a drainage map of the whole town with all of our infrastructure on it.
You do.
We do.
I knew you had out, I knew you had outfalls, but like, okay.
Yeah, so we actually have.
So when you trace a, a, and listen, discharge, you can, you can flood.
You got, no, no, this is one that I, we update.
No, but it's a real map, it's not a mobile map, it's.
This is a working G I S that the town has on our service. Um, but it has sub sewer sheds, sub stormwater sewer sheds, it has all utility information.
Pipe sizes.
We haven't gotten that far because that's not a requirement just yet, but we have conveyance systems as in. Uh, here's our inverts, we haven't gotten like, we have it, but you get different systems that gets tricky. It just took us a week and a half to figure out our own drainage system and highway. We actually had to bring a cam in because we couldn't tell you where anything went. Um, so we have all that mapped out, you've got all our connections. So anywhere where a storm system that's private connects with our system with maps, as well as where we connect to the cities and the counties and states.
Alright.
So.
Thanks, doing it out.
Of course.
Appreciate it. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Did that.
I was, I was paying attention.
Everything except saying they're out.
I know everybody fall asleep by now, so I figured I'd better get the business done.
Before we gavel out, can I just remind everybody of the training on Thursday about housing affordability that we're doing? Uh, with.
Oh, you're learning lunch?
Before we gavel out, can I remind everyone about the stormwater training?
That's in November, right?
By the end of this week, so I can get you guys checks cut, so you can register.
You got me.
I got Kim, I got three vehicles, so. I.
I know.
The November.
You didn't.
Just learned all about.
Thank you.
Amanda, didn't you have a motion?
I'm making a motion to return. For.
Except that they like make us.
Okay, you got a motion second.
Okay, uh, who's in charge of? Stormwater website, it sounds. I think that would be useful, um.
Where's that, it's here?
Go in and know what the. State laws, it's one information.
It's on my calendar.